Glad everybody would come together here. A meeting to order, seven oh two. Everybody would take your hats off and silence your phones will have a flagellation. Brief invitation.
But the leaders should allow the United States of America and you.
Heavenly Father, you come here tonight to do the public's business, we'd ask that you join us, help us. Moderate us and keep us moving forward always. Thank you, Jesus name amen. Well, thank you, everybody for coming out, you see a lot of new faces, old faces that haven't been here in a while, so thank you. Start the roll call, Michelle Jackson. Dave Cost here, Bob Underhill here, Jim Lefty here, and we are missing our clerk tonight. She's had some continuing health problems, we wish her the best and hope to see her back here soon. She is on Zoom. I believe she was on Zoom, but I don't see her at the moment, but she generally chimes in. Is there any disclosure of conflicts this evening?
No.
No? Dave, any conflicts? Bob?
None.
None here. Okay. Take a minute, look at the agenda, I have a. Two things I'd like to add, they're very short, sweet, I have the payment schedule or the proposed payment schedule for the installment loan on the Coles Zinn and Monroe project. Like to share it with everybody, also I have an email from the sheriff again asking if there's any support for a deputy has a. Hourly rate he's proposing, but we'll get to that. Loan payment schedule will be adding to line twelve GG and the sheriff's email, I'll read at line F in the reports. All right. Brings us to, and this is a little unusual here, this is not something we normally do, but I felt that there was a significant enough incident at the last meeting. But we should have a board discussion on this. And. We'll maybe take some action depending on what we discover and. I'd like to begin by. Just saying this, at the end of our last meeting. We had one of our trustees, Mr. Cost here, get up and. More or less, in my opinion. Stood up there and poked his finger and was like lecturing our zoning administrator. And. He made a comment, he said to the zoning administrator, we're gonna get you up on the stand and make you answer questions. Now, what that is, I don't know, I'm hoping we're gonna find out, he also called the zoning administrator clown. The altercation continued out on the porch. And. I don't think it's very becoming of our township people to be doing that, so I'm hoping there's some room for discussion. And depending on what we decide, I have a motion to censor prepared and whether or not we act on it will determine at the end of our conversation. Michelle, would you like to express anything about what happened on April twenty second?
Yes, so I also agree, I mean, I'm very open to debate. I'm opening, open to respect of differing opinions and different ideas, I am not open to attacking anybody verbally or physically. And I got up in the left, I said, this is inappropriate and I got up in the left, I think that it is unbecoming of township representative, but more so it interferes with our board meetings.
I wasn't here for the incident. But as a trustee, I would. But you need to, it's very important. Self dealing, self dealing. Primarily, and as I'm told, there was conflict on the board. And that cannot come onto the board personally.
I've kind of expressed my feelings on what I believe happened and. Again, these are all our own opinions, we're acting on our own behalf here. I would like to ask Dave if he would like to engage and tell us why we're in this position.
Oh, truth be matter, the way you represented what happened is incorrect. I was basically attacked and intimidated by old John West. We looked at the video, John cheated my path several times and was saying, you want a piece of me, you wanna fight right now? And things of that nature, I have one guy on one side, one guy on the other, and they were attacking and intimidating me. I have a right to defend myself, number one, number two, in the township hall, I used to. Open the office administrator office and cover for that vacancy. And several times, John made it very uncomfortable for me to be in the office, made it a very toxic work environment. I reported this to Jim, as a matter of fact, Jim was there at one of the meetings. And it got so bad that I couldn't do anything, so I can no longer provide that service to the public, which I was doing for free, which we used to pay, but didn't do. So there's plenty of video evidence, it's under investigation, I'm gonna be adding what happened to a lawsuit. The cameras don't lie, I was trying to go down the spectator at the end of the meeting and John purposely stood in my way. And would not leave, I pointed to him, I said, there's a camera right there, I was going that way, cheating my driver.
I blocked the road.
I seen you coming out the door in the video and people that are sitting in this room, seeing the video, I showed it to them. And they made a comment, I'm not gonna say who it is or who they are. They made a comment at you as supervisor, who walked away while that was going on. We all know that, you know, we all know that you are a puppet to John West.
We all know that.
Yes, we do.
Is this necessary? No.
Please, we'll have public comment in a minute.
Yes, okay, so, yeah, so it's true, the video shows you locking the door while this was going on, walking right past us, getting in your car and leaving.
That's correct.
That's right, okay.
I had no problem walking off of it.
So, yeah, the way you represented this is not true, okay, that's the way you wanted to be.
Video, if you'd like.
Well, I have the video as well, it's, there's a video that Deputy McCormick has and it's quite convincing, he came over and showed me, so two minutes, but. I requested that, it's at the prosecuting attorney's office, so I'm gonna let it go until it echoes the full investigation and we'll see what happens.
Okay. I would just say again, I had no problem walking off of the thing over here, there was room on both sides, he was standing directly in the middle, but you can determine that.
No, okay, what happened is I, I was walking straight and he jumped in front of me and he said, what are you gonna do on it? Okay.
Okay, well, there is no, we can, our number video all night long, we can watch it and determine if, or we can move on to the board.
I think what we'll do is we'll read the resolution and if there's enough support. Decide whether or not to pass it.
Mr. Chair, can I respond? He's the agreement.
All I will say is the best.
Okay. He remembered.
Adam, I can respond, I can run the meeting, okay, we don't need you doing it to, okay, Johnny?
All I would like to say is the investigation is pending and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, the investigation is pending on several fronts.
Well, you know, let's add a little more to it, like from a year ago.
I don't think, we're talking about April twenty second, April twenty second, we won this meeting, not any time in the past, right? You wanna bring up the past, do it in your own lawsuit, I'm talking about April twenty second at our meeting, that's all that concerns me right now.
Okay, so everything else that leads up to that, you don't wanna talk about?
Not at this meeting, this isn't a court case here, okay, we're discussing what happened at that meeting, I'm gonna read the resolution. Resolution to censure a township member, this is resolution, I believe, number ten at the moment. Resolution to censure trustee David Cost, whereas Dave Cost, a member of Clearwater Township Board of Trustees, has engaged in conduct unbecoming of an elected official. Whereas during the general township meeting on April twenty second, twenty twenty five, Dave made derogatory comments to current appointed zoning administrator for Clearwater Township. Violating the township's code of conduct and ethics, disputing a public, disrupt, excuse me, disrupting a public meeting. Whereas during the general township meeting, David Cost exhibited childish behavior to engage the township. Appointed zoning administrator, he utilized intimidation tactics, skewed verbally abusive accusations and made threats of legal repercussions which are unbecoming of an elected official. Whereas such behavior goes against the state of Michigan's code of conduct of an elected township official, whereas such behavior goes against recommended MTA code of conduct. Which strongly encourages townships to adopt principles of governance that emphasizes ethical behavior, transparency and respect. Civility and respect should be demonstrated in all governance processes and in the delivery of township services. Whereas township officials are expected to adhere to all applicable laws, ordinances and township policies and procedures. Whereas it is further policy that the township authority is exercised through board decisions and recorded at meetings. Adverse exhibited behavior takes away from the township's board's ability to focus on issues important to the community and lead through challenges. Whereas it is further said, noncompliance with township policies, ethics and conduct codes can lead to internal reprimand, former censure or loss of committee assignments. Whereas such actions have undermined public trust and effective functioning of the board. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clearwater Township Board of Trustees formally censures Dave Cost for the aforementioned. Be it further resolved that this censure shall be included in the official minutes of the board and communicated to the public as deemed appropriate by the board. Do I have a motion to accept this?
I have a motion.
Okay, I will second the motion.
Before it can be processed.
A censure is only to state that publicly the other trustees of the board disapprove of the behavior, nothing more than that. It has nothing to do with any kind of legal wrangling or anything like that, it's just publicly disapproval of the behavior and that's what a censure is.
Motion. And a second.
Did the, can I ask, did the township attorney get this language and be involved in any of the issues surrounded?
The township lawyer did not look at this, this is a board function to. Alert the public that David Cost's actions are not necessarily the feelings or the opinions of the people on this board. I have full faith and confidence in our zoning administrator, he is not a clown. And, you know, Dave may have some problems with him from the past or whatever, but when we come into these meetings, we have a requirement, a duty to be professional and ethical. And I don't believe that took place at the last meeting, we have a motion on the table and a second. Bob Underhill, how do you vote? Dave Cost, no. Joe Jackson?
Yes.
Jim Lefty, yes. This motion is adopted. I have a bunch of other material on conduct in here, I didn't know if I would. You know, need to go into that for this, but. I feel that this is. You know, something I've never seen, I've been involved in township for a lot of years, just attending meetings, I've been. On several different boards and commissions and all kinds of things, and now I'm sitting here and I, this is the first time I've ever seen something. To the point where we had to actually censor a board member because of his behavior, so it's very unusual.
Behavior of John West.
John West was sitting in his chair when you went. We've already passed the resolution.
Yeah, but you don't wanna talk about the truth, you just wanna talk about.
I hate your time to talk, Dave, this is exactly why we have the censure.
What I had to say about what happened outside and you're saying about what happened inside before it went outside.
It's true.
An elected official, this censure means nothing.
Whatever.
Yeah, you can't give it rid of an elected official or this kind of.
If we're trying to cease what you're doing right now, okay, where you think.
You're telling one side of the story, you know exactly what the other side.
You're not in order, neither are you.
Excuse me, I said neither are you.
This is why you're being censored, Dave. I would ask the public to just observe, you know, make your own decisions. We have more of a meeting to go here, so I'm gonna move on, we'll now go into public comment, each who would like to start off public comment. Teresa.
The first thing I wanted to say is I think there was, there were other steps that could have been taken before the censure, especially in the fact that there's an ongoing investigation. That's my one comment, the other thing is I think part of the problems as OPAT rules are not, they're not enforced equitably. And there's no transparency, the documentation of different issues are not public. And I think that if those issues were addressed, we'd have less of conflicts. It's not up to an applicant to decide whether they're in compliance or not, it's up to the zoning administrator. And if they need help, they should be able to call outside. Of the certain zoning and we should have a process that they can access experts because nobody knows everything. And that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Grace.
I, I would like to address the board of the servants in around the city, have you all had any to stop?
Wow.
That's what I feel.
That's really beautiful, you guys have done amazing stuff.
It is. Well, give me a whole 10 years, wanna hear about who. With. One other comment, water is a big issue.
Mainly.
In water.
Yep, I'm working on getting sort of a, you wanna. I've already got the bank for it too, so we're working.
And the trade.
Yes.
Who, who will vote this?
We have several things, we have two small John Deere tractors which can remain on the sidewalk. Vehicles that go down the sidewalk when they're plowed, so we know that.
Will, will it be for you, township gentleman?
Or a volunteer, yes, myself, I mean, I say volunteer, I'm an employee, but I work all kinds of different.
Just in regards to what right we would have in clearing the sign, depending on what we, so that's what I asked. No, we didn't.
Sure.
And the board is comfortable in those signs?
Yeah, I see it filling in a lot, I know this is public comment, we're really not supposed to interact with the comments, but. I like the islands, I think they're looking good, coming back. Any other public comment?
Just send an email or your mind, my other questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Two issues, I have three minutes for each.
Two minutes and forty five seconds now.
Oh, no, showway drive, I've looked under since I was maybe seven, we currently have approximately ten VRBOs, RBOs, Red Holes on your street. You guys did a wonderful job of refurbishing our road, but now it's become a driveway. And I did some research and there's no speed limit posted on that road and they do say that speed limits must be posted. If someone's going fifty five and the police officer pulls them over and says, hey, I'm going to get a ticket for fifty five, they didn't buy that ticket because there's nothing posted. And also the drivers training, they teach people right now that if there's no speed limit posted thirty, but it's a residential and it should be twenty five and would greatly appreciate a couple of signs on that road.
Is it down, is that, that's the.
Residential.
It's preserved.
There's two parts to showway, there's parcels on item, but it is, there are, there's showways towards River Pines, showway towards River Pines, two and three, yes, and I do have bylaws and restrictions that were recorded. For showway, pines, all three of them, which do say that there should not be anything commercial going on on the showway, so that brings me up to short term rentals. And where does that stand right now? I got, I got them on both sides, I mean, there's ten on.
It is currently at the planning commission with a few items still being reworked.
Okay, so I should go to a planning commission meeting to share some information with them?
Sure, sure.
Okay, but I think the Michigan Supreme Court just ruled in twenty twenty three that. Initially, they ruled they were allowed in residentials and then that was in twenty twenty, but in twenty twenty three, they ruled, they took it back and they said, no. A resident is where you keep your furniture, your clothes, your golf clubs and all that, and so to have someone that doesn't own anything there. Use it becomes commercial, so maybe we could put something in that, that's the other residential area.
Joanna.
As of this week, we now have a five one C three called Friends of Clearwater Township Parks, it's outside the government and it's for anyone who wants a tax deduction. If they qualify, either income or not, but they can, funds can be sent to all the state bank. From here, our friends of Clearwater Township Parks, it can be dropped off and wait, then we now have four hundred dollars in that. Give the first two hundred.
Is there any other public comment?
Did I use my three minutes?
Actually, you did, after everyone talks. Yes, fair.
I just wanted to comment, I'm hearing outrage at, at name calling and tax, but when you join Charles and the deputy treasurer and Jeff West were attacking me. Nobody was outraged, nobody defended me, I just wonder, was there, was I just a well manned, token, full employee or was I nobody? I just, I'm saying, you're outraged, but I wasn't seeing it, when I, I wouldn't be defended.
We've had this conversation, Craig, and I've tried to explain, okay, the accusations that were made against you in that meeting were done in public.
I understand, but I was not defended, but everybody's outraged now about.
Actually, a board member is a different.
I wasn't here then, so I can't, I can't speak on that, and I'm not speaking, I'm just saying. There should be outrage at all of that kind of stuff.
I agree, I don't see that there's a need for it, honestly, you're right.
And it was a former elected official, a dismissed employee and a current employee that were doing it, so you got the whole gun up there, you got the whole name. And so if one employee can attack another employee, you're saying, okay.
Did you have your, is there another public comment?
But I love those speed limit things that you guys put up, oh my gosh, that is so great, but it's still, I watched people go through their forty eight, forty nine, fifty, I mean, it's flash and red. So maybe to make some money for the county, let's put something that takes the picture of your license plate and send them a ticket because it's, it's weird. Maybe not only could a foreign police officer, but I don't know, just a suggestion, the township could make a motion, you'll have to research. But for every ticket that the sheriff would write in our township, we would receive a portion.
We've gone through this at safety meetings to no end, we have debated this, we've had. Conversations about constable and their ability to generate money and.
No, I'm just saying, every time, sure. It is in violation. They were horrible, no cash, please pay attention. No.
Yep, yep, I think right now all the money is going to the county, I don't think there's a portion for us because they're the ones writing the ticket, if we were. No?
I'll put some research inside.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, in the, any other public comments or?
I won't stay long, you're very convenient. My name is David Grant, I wanna let you know about I respect for what you folks do here. My wife and I sat on this board for twenty five years and I'm hoping that you change things and we're gonna go into a different direction. The other thing is I wanted to thank you for the cleanup day, I appreciated the fact you took time to talk to people, I think people appreciate that. I didn't see a truck or a reporter that sold balance of accounts and this type of thing.
We have it, just a quick explanation on that and we'll get to it.
Look at it, I was used to seeing one show balance.
Will actually be posted on.
All right, thank you. Office help, I understand you don't have anyone in there right now.
You have me, I'm there every day, ten or twelve hours, every day.
Expect to build, I'd like to see that young lady back in there again, I always thought you did a terrific job. And I gotta be honest with you, I do support Craig, I would like to see him back. And more importantly, as a community and a township board, I would like to think that you can bridge these differences you have. When you said you never have been subjected to having to put somebody out, I had police officers remove board members. I had other people put out of the building and unfortunately I inherited a similar situation that you did. And after people realized they should respect what the board does and that stuff ended. And I think a lot of that can happen when you, I like to have public comment in the beginning and in the end. Anytime in between when the board's doing their business is not a time for public comment by anybody. I think you should follow Roberts' rules or whatever you do as a township board. I think you should follow uh, Robert's rules or whatever you do as a township board. Um, I think you're trying to do what's right. And actually, I think everybody sitting here probably is trying to do what's right, but there happens to be some differences. So I guess if you wanna show your leadership and everything, you might wanna step forward and bridge these problems. Offer a olive branch to John maybe, and maybe to you too. And this man down here. I don't think we need two people doing maintenance work, I found out in the past, it took thirteen years to figure it out. A one-man show, the guy that you could trust, that you knew would do the job was always a better deal. There was no coordination between the two or anything like that. But other than that, I probably ate up my three minutes and everybody that knows me knows I like to talk. But, again, like I said, I wanted to thank you and uh, I do support both of you. And nobody works because they like it, they do it as a job, and I think everybody owes every individual the respect as of another as I would give to you, as you would give to me.
Yes, sir.
Alright, that's all I wanted to say. And other than that, I pray for you and offer you all uh, good luck, is all I gotta say. And that guy there, I don't know what you got him here for. But if that's anything to do with what you're doing out here, then you got the right guy. And I'm gonna tell you, Tim did a lot of work for me and I'm proud to call him a friend.
I'm glad you did.
Absolutely, no doubt. Well, thank you. My wife's at home and I promised I wouldn't stay too long. But I did wanna, I do watch your stuff.
Good.
Good night, everybody.
Any other quick public comment? Quickly, yep.
I just wanna ditto everything he said, and I guess that goes back to the censure, and I really feel that olive branches are better than, I am more of a peace, peace, and I think that sometimes when you jump right into things like that, it causes more animosity than healing, and I think that we had a really good chance to heal things. And I'm, I'm just, that's my minute, is I, I'm not for the censure, and I like that in the minutes.
Okay. Any other public comment? Margaret, yes ma'am.
Um, I, I would like to also reiterate um, Dave's comment about um, about how the public, we're, we're supposed to be quiet for the whole meeting until public comment is before and after. I'd like to encourage the board to, to keep that up, to keep that vote. Um, and my other, quite, quite a comment or question is that, um, is as the resolution was being read, um, there was a reference to that, that you would follow policy. And my understanding is that policy is largely missing in our township.
We have some, but nowhere near enough.
Yeah, would that be um, a policy that exists now or one that will be introduced in a future?
Um, again, um, and not really responding to public comment, each and every one, but uh, we do have some ethics in our employee manual, um. You know, it's mutual respect, okay, and we can disagree, I disagree with a lot of people, and I've had my share of arguments and, you know, different things with Craig, or excuse me, with Dave. And uh, you know, we're not gonna get along and you know, on every single thing, we're not gonna be locked, okay, that's why we're, there's five of us so that we come up with a consensus. And I don't take these things personally, I'm trying to run a meeting and I have, you know, disruptions that I feel need to be addressed, and that's what I do. Okay, um. So I'm just acting, trying to make sense of what little bit of control we do have to try to maintain civility, that's what my goal is. Just to maintain civility, so. Dave?
Um, I'd like to say one thing about the cleanup last Saturday. I also interviewed every person that was there. Um, and everybody thought it was a great idea if we did that twice a year, one time in the fall, October or whatever. And also, uh, it'd be nice to get some dust control on that road when you do that, because it's quite dusty.
I can make that happen.
Yeah, so I got other things, but a list letter like that.
Okay. Joanne, one quick one.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm Charles, I wasn't here, but Craig read that letter, I was absolutely shocked to hear. I was a former treasurer, I was the parks representative, I have never been in contact with Craig at all. The one thing you might have heard at the budget meeting is I was for four years, we've been concerned about the time sheets. It's how the time sheets are, how do you build to the cemetery? It started working a little bit, what we needed to, what you do, how long you were there, and I think maybe that's what you got upset with, but since I've left, no longer in office, I helped Craig on a cold winter day, I think we spent two days, he called me hanging up all, all wreaths downtown, I helped him put the clear up on the pavilion because I knew it'd hard rule itself. We've never had a conflict, that's my base with the shack room. That's what I've done.
Okay. Alright, Adam, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I got a question uh, for you that deals with you and the township zoning administrator.
Okay.
The question is, is, is the township zoning administrator has a conflict of interest? Who does he go to or who does that person go to?
Um, it's a good question.
Well, I'll give you the answer, it's you.
Okay, yeah, that would have been my.
Okay, well, so, therefore, um, we have land usage permits that are probably not being pulled. We have the situation on Snyder Road. For one thing right now, that um, there was an electrical permit pulled but nothing else. And there is now three tubes sticking out of the ground with electric water and, or, and sewage. And I wanna know basically what your zoning administrator or you are gonna do about it.
When you say a conflict of interest, you mean because it's his brother that did it?
Yes. Because that falls back on the supervisory.
Yeah. Well, um, let me ask you this, okay, if uh, you were looking at a directive for a, to approve a permit and everything that was there was approved, or I, I shouldn't say approved, it was permitted. Okay. How could that be a conflict of interest if the things are, you know, permitted on a certain property?
Well, let me ask you that. Did he get a land usage permit, did you fill him out one?
I did not, no, but.
Okay, well, right there is a violation. Okay. Number two, that land usage permit is supposed to go to the county, wait on order, I've listened to enough, this is.
Just a minute, Jeff, I'll give you a chance to stop, but right now he's got the floor.
Number two, that land usage permit is supposed to go to the building department and the health department, no matter what you're doing. To get your permit to reconstruct a garage or put in things like, that are getting put in. Um, other people in township do follow the rules. And we have one gentleman that's basically not. And um, I'm just wondering what you as a supervisor is gonna do?
Well, I'm gonna look at it first of all, but uh, I, I can just ask John, well, John, was there a land use permit pulled on that?
No, it was not.
Guess I would have to ask the question, why?
My husband held permit, are you asking me, sir?
Yes, sir. I mean, if, if you, if that's where we start with all of our improvements for, you know, improving land, we start with land use permit. And we shouldn't conflict public comment and carry this on, but uh, I tell you what, Adam, um, I, I think I got your phone number, but would you make sure that I get your phone number? And I'll reach back out to you on this specifically rather than debate on it in public comment. Obviously, there's a discrepancy somewhere and we'll figure it out. One quick.
All set. No, we'll just let you guys figure it out and then I'll be reactive in a, in a proper manner.
Okay.
Thank you.
I see one my end there.
Really quick, what is the problem? So, from my understanding, the zoning administrator is not gonna drive around and point out everybody that hasn't pulled the permit. It's their responsibility to come and get a permit, so that would be off the shoulders of the zoning unless somebody complains. So if you have a neighbor that complains to the zoning, then he has to go out and take care of it, but it's, I don't, I mean, it's not his job to go out and pit at people.
I would say there have been interested people and I wouldn't necessarily count complaints, but they have been brought to our attention.
Okay, but you know, to ask him if somebody, if you don't buy, John, I pulled the permit, just seemed a little bit scared to me.
Well, I just wanted to know if there was a land use permit on that project, it wasn't necessarily that I trying to, you know, pin somebody down on something, it was just knowledge to know whether or not to permit it happened. I'll reach out to you, Adam, and we'll, we'll uh, we'll talk.
No problem.
The administrator company, that's the ordinance that is adopted by Clearwater Township.
Okay, any other public comment on that or move on? Alright, we are on guest reports, Deputy Crichton.
Uh, evening, everybody. The month before, the Alcatraz Sheriff's Office investigated sixty-two complaints, plus one which I have investigated. Um, on our notes, mobile activities. On our about twelve vehicle, I made contact with a male subject, driving residence, and he wished out a calling warrant. That subject was arrested in Washington County Jail public. On our about third vehicle, Alcatraz deputies were dispatched to a vehicle crash on Hill Road, in Clearwater Township. And the investigation led the driver to be arrested for robbing a counter-attacker. Uh, most recently, one thing I wanted to uh, mention to everyone, um, this month on the tenth, KSO deputies and myself had an issue with a pursuit with a crouch rocket going through Rapid City for being abused. So, sadly and unfortunately, we had to terminate the pursuit in the Rapid City area. We, when we're doing one hundred and thirty, we just couldn't keep all the rocket up it. So, apologize for not being able to catch one, but we were able to identify that suspect who reported the assault against us here. I'm sorry, what?
We're abbreviation, MSO.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alcatraz sheriffs. Okay, so, I apologize for that. Um, and then the only other thing on there for the township, probably used to be in two hours, um, short of the minimum. Um, had a lot of, a little bit of training last month, so probably caused it occurred outside of Clearwater. Um, however, when I did the average for the sheriff's, so, a lot forty-one hours. And for the heavy crime, so, we had to.
Uh, I would just point out too that our contract for additional patrol has expired with the sheriff and they're more or less continuing on the same hourly rate that has been pretty closely. You know, I, I, I have a, a personal opinion on that, uh, you know, we pay taxes for the sheriff. Sheriff is like a third of the whole county's budget, sheriff's department uses a lot of money. And uh, rightly so, it performs a pretty important duty. But, I just wanna say thank you, you know, for keeping that up, um. We're, we're about, I think we just crept up to sixteen percent of the county's budget, like we contribute to the county sixteen percent of their income, just our township.
Through our taxes or through?
Yes.
Through our taxes?
Yes. Well, our, our township just became the most uh, valued township in the county, so we're, we're number one now.
Beyond lawyers.
Alright, if anybody has anything else for the sheriff, otherwise we're gonna move on. I'd like to say he's doing a great job, anytime I've had an issue, he's there, and I see a great presence in the town, so, thank you. Appreciate it. Alright, if we have nothing else then, we'll move on to this, uh, Dina. Jardi here, Jardi, and your saddle anthem. Thanks, Brian.
Good evening, I'm Dina Jardi, I'm the executive director of Paddle and Chrome, our mission is to protect our waterways by protecting people through paddles boards. We host the Chain of Lakes Water Trail, which encompasses um, four counties, including and Clearwater Township, so twenty different governmental entities to create over a hundred miles of water trail through this area. We are grateful for the township's partnership, we could not do the water trail without your partnership and all the other um, partners in the water trail, so right, if all twenty didn't work, it would, there'd be gaps, so we're grateful for your partnership. Um, we've been doing this for, this will be our fifth season of the Chain of Lakes Water Trail being open. As part of our partnership, um, we need to come at least once a year and connect with you, so I'm just gonna give you guys an update. I'm always open though to meet or connect if you have any issues, we're grateful um, to be able to do this. I haven't had any issues thankfully, overall with anything in Clearwater Township, we're grateful to that. Um, in five years, I think out of eighty-four access sites, we've had four sign issues. Um, I guess we did have one vandalism in Clearwater Township, we were able to clean that up. We had two stolen signs, um, in Torch Lake Township and Forest Home, um, but other than that, and one shot sign at, um, Skidmore. So, but, beyond that, out of all eighty-four access sites in five years, I think that's really good. Um, and so we're gonna continue to work on the water trail. We have a website, so visitors and residents can visit the water trail, we have a waterproof guide and an online guide that people can learn how to get on the water at any times. We recently did a water trail plan update, which included a survey of all twenty access site owners as well as paddlers and local businesses. In general, we heard positive things, um, we heard people want more bathrooms along the water trail, no shocker there, there are some gaps. Um, right, um, along the water trail, and that's, when you have a hundred miles, it's, it's to be expected. People wanna see more accessibility, more accessible access sites along the water trail, and people wanna connect more to the community, people wanna be able to go in and connect with the community, so they're looking to us so we can share with them, where are the restaurants, where are the places where they can pick apples and do other things when they're here. So we heard that and we wanna help connect the people who come here to the communities and what you guys have to offer as well, um, and we look to, to do more of that. Um, people wanna see us continue to protect the waterways, so emphasizing stewardship, um, protecting from invasive species, protecting natural shorelines, things like that, um, as well. I was also asked to control the wind and motorized boats, and I cannot do that, thanks. Um, so, as we move forward, as you are working on your access sites, if you have issues or if there are things that we need to do or if you're looking for improvements, please work with us, we're, we're here to help. In April, um, so the Chain of Lakes Water Trail, we're in our fifth year, in April, we were designated a Pure Michigan Water Trail. Um, it's a pretty big honor, so there are eleven Pure Michigan Trails in the whole state. So, Pure Michigan designates non-motorized trails, so there are eleven non-motorized trails that have been designated as Pure Michigan, and we are now one of eleven and the only one that's a water trail, so it's a really big honor. And thank you guys for being a part of it, and we couldn't do it without our partners, without our volunteers who help us create this quality experience along the water. Um, as an organization, we continue to promote safety and stewardship, um, and encourage people to get out on the water. We host safety paddling classes for youth and adults all season long and encourage residents to join us out on the water. We do community paddles throughout the water trail all season long, so people can get out and try new places with us for free. Um, and then we host the Paddle Anthem Festival every year where we get somewhere between a hundred and two hundred people that paddle from Ellsworth all the way potentially to Elkhapp, it's about thirty percent maybe. Um, and enjoy the communities along the way as well, so. We are grateful for the opportunity, we continue to work with you guys, and if there are ever any issues or problems, please reach out. Um, and I'm open to any questions that the board has at this time.
I would just encourage anybody to look up Pure Michigan, um, there's a like a three-minute thing on the whole trail, it's very, it's beautiful, um, described most of it, so I would encourage people to look that up.
They do pass just our annual report and some information through the board as well.
Okay, great. Fantastic. Anybody have any questions for Dina?
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, did, do you do any river kayaking?
We do, we are primarily just on the Chain of Lakes, so we do mainly just, and which is a lake system.
Cause I, I do have a piece of property on Renta River, that gives you five miles of river all the way to Torch River, which plus Torch Lake everywhere else.
Okay.
That I would be interested in. This is all.
Right, it's part of the connectivity.
Pre-creation, I can't run a commercial enterprise out of there.
Yeah.
But uh, I, I would like to talk.
That would be great, I will give you a hard refund even if we, I'd love to connect.
Where are your access sites?
So they are along. I should know that.
Most of our water.
And the torch room.
And then we also have your, right, um. And then we also have your right, um, Torch River as well. Yeah. Thank you.
Torch Lake to, uh, baseball, well, that's in Alden, I guess.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, but the ones by the township that have been designated, there isn't any on the river yet. Um, the Rented River, they are all on Torch and Torch River.
On the chain.
On the chain.
There's one in Iwo.
Iwo Tso, yeah.
Torch, Torch River.
On the, so Torch, yeah, yeah. There's a sign there as well.
Yes.
Well, there's the state section, then further down.
And that's a real nice one too, it has, uh, rails and you can get out in the water without getting through them up and stuff, so.
We're meeting the area, and I noticed a lot of boat rations on here and some of the river, there's no garbage cans.
We, we have garbage cans, they're all of our water accesses right now.
The new boat ramps right there.
That's DNR.
That's also Milton Township.
Yeah. Yeah.
It is up to the local entity who owns it, right? And so some townships do make the choice to put them in, but DNR definitely is not an organization who has decided to put garbage in. So, yeah. It is a discussion that we also have to come to on here, and everything.
Okay, nobody has anything for Dina? Thank you.
Yes.
Um, I just, just found a, still a small thing here out of order that I wanted to present a public comment. And it's just an announcement that the Calcasas American Legion Post four eighty. The Sunday before Memorial Day at our Township Cemetery, at one thirty, they're gonna be performing a, uh, Memorial Day Ceremony. Um, basically, it'll be prayer, the reading of the names of veterans buried at the cemetery, and, uh, tolling of the bell. And rifle volley and the plane attack. So that is Sunday at one thirty in our Township Cemetery. Uh, okay. Okay, approval of the minutes, so we have our April seventeenth minutes in front of us. I've looked them over already a couple of times, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve them. Bob already did. All those in favor? All right, those are approved. April seventeenth, we have a special meeting minutes of April twenty-second. Again, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve you. Looks pretty good. Is there a second? All those in favor? All right, we'll be, uh, move on to the Treasury's report, number ten.
Yes, so, um, I had some difficulty with my computer. So, um, I was unable to provide a report. It's gonna be posted publicly on the website. Um, but we did reconcile with the, uh, county, well, the township clerk. So we reconciled and that will be posted tomorrow. But, um, our technical support, a lot of us too.
Books updated and our IT system locked us out temporarily until we get it updated, so.
So the other thing that we had talked about in our last meeting were some posts that got it. Um, ideas that, um, we have had to make things run smoothly with paying for bills with, um, township taxpayer monies. Um, I've kind of put those off because we've been working with the state treasury. And, um, we may have an opportunity to get help at the state level to bring in somebody, um, financially or financial company that can come in and scrub like our budget, our financial policies. And things of that nature. So I kind of put those ideas at this point on pause because we're also going to a new system. It's kind of nice that, um, that it could be a nice smooth transition to the S and A and having all of the financial policies set in place as well. So about moving forward, um, we have policies because we have budget policies in place. We know what our contracts are, um, we, we know where all of our money is going. Um, that comes in from taxpayers. So it's kind of one that's been put on pause. Um, until we decide on a company or an individual that will come in and provide the financial services for us. Um, with that said, we have been talking about looking at other banks. And you and I were trying to find a time free on our schedule where we could go and meet with our current bank. Um, to discuss our resolution. Yes, solve some problems because it might be just an easy fix, but out, you know, again, that olive branch, like, you know, we're satisfied with your service, but you have to accept our resolution over the bank's resolution. So, um, with that said, that was going to be our first time when you had time put up on your calendar where we could get together and go speak to individuals at, um, a state bank.
Okay. Want to mention one thing, and that is that the State Treasury Department, uh, keyed in on this because in twenty twenty-three, our then Township Board, uh, allowed our general fund to dip below eleven thousand dollars. So we, you know, kind of lit a light up somewhere at the state and they're working on this kind of, you know, trying to help determine how we can get back on a, to better feel, even if they have a thing. They have offered to reimburse us for the bookkeeping service of, uh, Michelle talked about. So it would be a cost to us to have like Plant Moran come in and look our books over and help us get a little more organized.
Yeah, we wouldn't just like pick one, we would allow, you know, anybody that would be interested would be able to give us a quote. And it would be contingent upon approval from the state. Well, that's awesome.
Yes.
It is good.
Even though it's kind of scary, it's awesome to, you know, know that we're gonna be looking at it correctly and, you know, going forward. We're, we're trying our best here, so.
And they can help us on the financial end, but they can also help us on the human resources end as far as setting up policies and procedures. And, um, we worked on job descriptions, which I think we've all really, you know, pulled up our shirts sleeves and did a good job coming up with realistic job descriptions. But also, once the financial part is done, is having, you know, somebody's family in HR, a company coming in and looking at our policies, looking at our procedures, providing, uh, so, um, with, uh, handbook for employees moving forward. You know, um, just so that we're in line with all of the recent changes and laws, um, with the state of Michigan. So that's also another positive, and it's one also that the state has suggested that they would be able to reimburse us for as well. To do that.
Okay, anybody have any questions for the Treasury?
I did want to add one thing too, and I didn't know if you had that specific gotten a job. So when we had first met with them, because we're gone with the S and A, the goal was maybe that they could reimburse us some of those firings. Um, but they're unable to because we were paying for that out of ARCA funds, which is already the state funds. So they're not gonna reimburse us for what they about to be paid. Paying for, um, for BS.
Yeah. Okay, with that, uh, if you're finished, we'll move on to the Treasury's report. And I see Christine is online, I hope she's gonna check in here any second. Christine, are you there? Oh, there she is.
I'm here. Yeah, you have your, uh, vendor expense report in front of you. Uh, there was one item that needed, uh, board approval, and that is the invoice for BSNA. Uh, for the assessor, the cemetery and taxes. And, um, what did you say that was for, Michelle?
For what we already have. It's not the only thing, just charging the annual fee for support of what we already have for taxes. Cemetery and, I'm sorry, what? So, yeah, so we're just renewing that support. And that doesn't have anything to do with the system that we're going to.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say we need a motion to approve that payment.
For the BSNA?
Yes.
You know the dollar figure that, uh, Fand, uh, Christine?
It should be on your report.
It is twenty-five hundred and eighty dollars.
Even?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a note that we, uh, pay for the BSNA, uh, service.
For what?
Yeah, uh, just for the upkeep, uh, annual payment of two ninety-five hundred and eighty dollars.
When I accepted that motion.
Any discussion on that before we walk? All right, Michelle Jackson.
Yes.
Jim Laffey, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Babe?
Yes.
All right, that motion they pass. And, um, I don't know about you all, but I looked over at the file there and went through all this over there with the bill and. I don't see any counters that I'm opposed to not paying. So I would make the motion to pay our expenses for April eighteenth through May fifteenth. Discussion, will we?
Because we had told the state that we were there, so we don't.
Yes. Yes. Okay, on the motion of, uh, paying our expenses for April eighteen through May fifteenth, Michelle, are you vote?
Um, yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Jim Laffey, yes. Motion passes.
There was, uh, one other bill that I did not write a check for because I wasn't sure, um, about it. It is for surveying, and I believe it's for Patriot Park, and it's for fifteen hundred dollars. And I don't remember the board voting to approve that.
Probably because I don't believe we did. Um, that was probably, uh, coming through Parks and Rec.
But I think the word they were having, do you agree with that, on the survey work?
Yes, I, I will say this, uh, I just recently applied for a C grant from the Rotary Charities. And one of the items that'd be listed was surveying on there, so, uh, there's a very good chance. I won't say a hundred percent, but, uh, we're gonna be reimbursed for the surveying, uh, when that grant comes through. Uh, again, I can't a hundred percent say that is ever gonna be the case, but, uh, it looks very positive. Um, it's probably been four months, we've been working on it with them back and forth, so.
And it was a necessity, right? From my understanding.
Yes, we had a couple neighbors that were concerned about.
The easement?
The easement and just close proximity to their property, and we needed to know where the line is, so. Dave, you had your hand up, I know you're in Parks and Rec.
The, uh, uh, clarification on the Rotary Charities. They've emailed me a couple of times per day, and we're on the, we didn't make the docket for this month, but we're on for June. And they'll, they acknowledge that they will let us know immediately. So I think it's the best. I just don't hold me on that, but, uh, now I gotta give you some more information tomorrow. So, um, that's looking good. They just are busy.
Okay, so.
The, uh, the invoice is on my desk, the survey was already done. So I, I don't know, do you want to make a motion to pay that out of Parks? Or do you want to pay it out of general fund? It's, uh, it's up to you.
If we've done our terms.
I think that, um, Mr. Ferrier would be agreeable if we were to wait until June fifth. And here on the status of our Rotary Charities grant. And, uh, I think he initially was maybe told that that was probably gonna be part of the package, but, uh, I think we could wait till June twelfth or June, uh, or June meeting.
Okay.
So we still need, uh, any more motions on expenses, or was that?
Nope, that was it. My only other thing is that the election went, uh, extremely well, uh, very easy. Um, there were forty-five actual voters, uh, five of them came in on Election Day. The rest were absentee ballots.
I know the guy owns the heating company down there, so we'll cut you, we'll cut you a break.
I did get your email, uh, as far as the, uh, incentives and things like that.
You guys, you guys are preferred customers, so you get a break anyway, but I'll, I'll do what I can do. I'll try to help you out a little bit.
Okay, nobody has any questions for the clerk? Go ahead and move on, and we're gonna hit reports by department. We have no fire chief here, but he did provide a, a report. I'll just kind of glance through it here. Twenty-four requests for service in April, three training stations with, uh, station twenty-two hundred, I think that's legit. Um, bit testing completed, I'm not sure what all that is, but I think it has something to do with their breathing apparatus. Uh, same with the flow testing. Uh, he lists down here, the insurance inspection was completed. I'll just mention that Christine and I, um, met with, and then as well as Derek, our, our, our chief, met with our insurance risk assessment person. Spent a whole day with the guy looking over everything and all the corners, under desks, and you name it. We've got a lot of work to do on that. I have a, an email, it's got eight attachments on it, I think, of different programs and stuff that we can follow up on that'll make us a little more bulletproof in our contracts with our vendors and just, the list goes on and on. So I'm packaging that up, so I'll present it probably at the next meeting. It's just happened a few days ago. But, uh, no super red flares or anything like that, but we have a lot of loose ends that we need to tighten up on.
We can not have ads on your, at the department too, but we are going with the budget to, you know, probably.
Yes.
Statement.
Yes. Um, it, it would be appropriate to maybe mention that, yeah. Um, we reached out to our attorney, we, um, former chief Greg Bradley asked me to look into, um, the way we paid out a settlement for a former fire department employee. And we had basically asked our attorney if it would be appropriate for us to build the fire department on this since it was a fire department employee. And we had basically asked our attorney if it would be appropriate for us to build the fire department on this, since it was a fire department employee and. He sent back a three-page reply and there's a very short conclusion here at the bottom pair of sentence, it says. The township may pay the applicable settlement out of the fire department fund or reimburse the general fund for the same. As long as the township board makes appropriate findings that such actions is warranted. And at the time, we already did that, yes, we voted to do that, so we're just kinda covering our bases and making sure that we did the proper thing there. Again, at that time, we were doing our budget and we were like rubbing two nickels together to keep the lights on, at least what we thought at that moment anyway, so. We scratched that money back from the fire department for that settlement with the approval of our attorney. Thank you.
No, thank you.
All right, I think that wraps the fire department up and that'll bring us to Derek Catter, chairman of the planning commission.
You should have gotten a written report.
Yes, sir.
The highlights of that are, in our May five meeting, we, we did approval menus for ethical playground diesel for a new building there. And that was the first order of business, most of the rest of the business of the meeting was spent. On the short-term rental ordinance and we had some pretty lengthy discussion regarding. Amendment number four to the zoning ordinance and how that affects rental of auxiliary living space. In residential zones and I think we had a pretty productive discussion there. I walked away learning a few things from it, so I hope everybody has to too. And we'll continue that next week. We set a public hearing date for the owner's rezoning request and that'll be our next regular meeting, June second at seven PM here. The notices have been sent out. What else? Oh, I put in a plug at the bottom of the report there. For the TLPA gym meeting in June, I can't attend that. I spoke with Talkeen from TLPA the other day and he kind of reiterated to me the importance of having. Representatives from all the townships there, there's six townships that surround. Forest Lake and they'd like to have at least. Two representatives for me, I'd like to see one from planning and at least one from the board. More will be better, but at least those two and I know myself, I'm out of town and so is Janine and Dave. But I think it's an important event to attend and it's, you'll be out of there by noon, it's nine thirty. He assured me not to go past me.
I believe you.
Yeah, it would be nice to have, I like. It's pretty good stuff. And then I see on your agenda here that you have something, I think it's regarding the amendment ordinance twenty-three.
Yes.
So that would be, that would be up to you guys to.
He's probably interested in that.
I did stake for that.
Well, just if I may for a minute, we, you know, all of our water access is down there. We have companies that wanna rent kayaks out of there and it's just. It's just not enough room in that, so we've limited it to one site, Burke Street, where there's parking on both sides of the street and put some. Different restrictions on them of parking and things like that, so just trying to keep everybody happy near us, but. Is that all you had to interview?
That's all I have, but.
We have your work.
Put that through, you really need to vote and.
Everybody has the memo here. I should probably read this. This is an amendment to. Ordinance twenty, which is. Road ending and public access sites and parks. Okay, number one. Add new language at the top of section four and regulations that reads. Commercial activity at road endings is prohibited other than the launching of non-motorized recreational craft by required permit. Commercial activities at township parks other than road endings require a permit and rental fee as set forth in the township fee schedule. This fee may be waived for nonprofit organizations and/or at the discretion of the township board. Private rental or township park pavilions is set forth in the township fee schedule. All right, number two, create a new entry in section four regulations under Q with the following language. The commercial launching of rental kayaks, canoes, SUVs, stand-up paddleboard. Or any other non-motorized recreational craft is allowed at select road endings by permit owners. Any permit issued requires the business owner to shuttle customers to the road ending. Customers are prohibited from parking at road ending site, the number of permits issued will be determined by the township board. Okay, and request number three is to update the language under section six, violations and penalties, subsection A one through three. With the following language. One, for a first offense, the offender shall pay a fine of five hundred dollars. And number two, for a second offense, within two years of the date on which the person was found responsible for the first violation. The offender shall pay a fine of five hundred dollars. Number three, for a third or subsequent offense within two years of the date on which the person was found responsible for the first violation, the offender shall pay a fine of. One thousand dollars. This was passed at the planning commission and they're asking us to approve that. Not sure if you all got a copy of the permit, it's just kinda more or less like our other rental permits, only it deals exclusively with the Burke Street Park. Um. You have your copy now? Yeah, I worked out, copy of it? I made you all copies for out here today. Oh, thank you. Okay. They've also been nice enough to write up a newspaper article that should this amendment pass, we'll have the right information to get it in the newspaper. All right, well, having presented that, is there any discussion?
I'll move it real quick after this cap.
Okay. I'll wait for the permit then if you want. Oh, it's like copy of the corrected ordinance or the new language inserted.
Yeah.
Okay, Michelle, you wanna hold off till you see the permit or?
You see.
Okay.
Jim, can you read this? Can we give it in hard again?
Sure. Commercial activity at road endings is prohibited. Other than the launching of non-motorized recreational craft by required permit.
Okay.
So if somebody sets up a bunch of inflatables and they rent them for ten bucks an hour or whatever, that is an illegal activity on the road.
So what if that business transaction takes place off-site? Person throws kayak on a road going down there, does he not kinda own that kayak for the day and then it's personal? I'm just looking, I'm just telling you, there's loopholes.
Yeah, if an individual rented a concon or a kayak or whatever and they are using the launch to go out on it, that's fine.
That's, yeah.
We're talking about people that come with a trailer full of canoes.
Conducting business.
Exactly.
Jim, can I get that on? Yeah. Yes, if I may, and the other part of restricting commercial activity at those road ends would be. Like a blue truck or something wanting to set it there, so that's the idea behind the commercial activity.
So the heading is under natural activity, is that how it's?
Prohibited.
You don't like they can't.
That's why, that's why it's commercial activity except for launching.
Which is up to them. While we're talking about that and we're waiting on those, and the Lake Street, I just happened to think this, the Lake Street access just recently had some. The signage upgraded, I don't know if any of you have seen it, but. We're also gonna try something new this year at Lake Street, we're gonna take our line. Device for baseball fields, the top one and things, and we're gonna try to maintain four parking spaces. One of them, we're hoping to restrict it as a loading zone only, so if someone wanted to, you know, drop something off, that would do. There would be a loading zone only parking and then three other. Long-term parking or whatever, so try to create a little flow there, it's a high danger area. All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the proposed amendment change? I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the amendment to zoning or ordinance twenty, road ending public access site at parks. As stated in the memo. And again, on the newspaper. Posting. So Jim made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Michelle Jackson?
Yeah.
Dave?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Jim, yes. All right, that motion passed. And I. Was it Grand Valley Marine has been ringing a phone off the hook wanting to, you know, hear what happens on this, so I will reach out to them tomorrow. I mean, the good news. And they can have. Okay. Thanks for your. All right, if nobody has anything for Dan, planning commission chair, I'll move on to Parks and Recreation. Yeah, no.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Who was it, Bella?
I'd be too late to ask him for us.
Okay, I have the Parks and Rec is next on the reports. Everybody should have that in their thing there, you have just a second. We have a. Member of the Parks and Rec Committee, Josh Keel, who volunteered some time. To remove some dirt around the new playground equipment that's been installed over Heritage, just wanna thank him for that. Hard to find being volunteers. We'll say this, the insurance risk assessment individual did find quite a few things at the park. Pointed them out to me. Not that I didn't already know we had a huge amount of issues at the park, but it was. Kinda humbling to see our insurance agents, you know, point out broken boards and, you know. Legitimate problems, so. Our little. I guess you would call it a little excavator at the. Playground has no seat, so there's literally a bar that kids have to sit down to operate. A toy that's there and little sand moving, so something I definitely gotta get working.
Was the, I'm sorry, it was the, the new playground equipment and your region sold. At that time?
Was it installed at that time?
Yeah, well, is the.
Yes, the insurance guy with that, yep.
What did he think about that?
Well, he responded in his email, one of the. Things that he brought to our attention, of course, is the current status of it, which is the. Fall median hasn't been put in there yet, we have to remove some of the dirt before we can put more clean dirt or whatever we're gonna put in there, but. He did point out to me that the Michigan Fire Plan has a grant program where they will actually supply, like if we were to. Bid out and find out how much it costs to get little rubber shreds, you know, to put the bottom in there or whatever, Michigan Fire Plan will pay for that. We gotta figure out what we're gonna put in there and get a price.
And structures was an accident, we had, so.
The new.
Finding wall is.
Krista, I'm your freshman year director, we've been ready that seat. Couple of times over here, park approved and purchased a new seat last fall back at John Nearest. Yeah, just a tractor seat and, but I don't, I think they were waiting to this one really, but, but I don't think that worked.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, Dave. Dave is I, Parks and Rec, for those who don't.
I'm the playground president, in the future, I suggest that there is more details that. When something is installed, it just went over. We were misled with that whole deal. That site plan was supposed to be all ready to go and they were supposed to install, that didn't happen. So we called Josh and to go in there with his backhoe, spent four hours, now we gotta go over there with shovelers to get in there and shovel it out. We were gonna have an open house this Sunday, we had to cancel it. They had Craig bring a bunch of. Four by, four by sixes or whatever over there, they'd been laying there for two months, killing the grass. We need to get a plan, Parks and Rec needs to have. Follow a plan, that was just a mess doing that whole thing and even in the install and it's still going on. So I suggest in the future, there's a little more criteria news.
A little more, that would have been nice.
Yeah, it's just pre-wheeling.
With, do they have their own budget and approve their own things?
To a certain point, they have seven hundred dollar or five hundred dollar spending limit. Anything above that, they have to approve or the board has to approve.
How many times a year do they do that? Or is more?
Well, they have a quarter mill, which a lot, which brings them about forty-four thousand dollars a year.
And, and that is for operations and maintenance?
Yes.
Thank you, so not to, you know.
That's what the wording was on the actual. Ballot proposal, yeah, for the village, it says maintenance.
And operations.
Operations.
Will their minutes be for the whole online?
They are online, yep, they're online.
You can access them.
Yeah, just search them.
I'll send you a link to their minutes.
And you've been on having a hard time accessing anything.
Can you put in the search bar what you're looking for?
We have to go to access minutes, ask minutes, meetings.
That'll run under the board. It's under, I can show you where that is.
Okay, must be in some, I use the search bar.
Okay, a couple of things on Parks and Rec here, we have Mr. Tim Lund in the house. For those who don't know, Tim was heavily involved in the initial phases of. The creation of Heritage Park, he did about four years of volunteer work to qualify for. The creation of Heritage Park. He did uh about four years of volunteer work to qualify for a grant donating your time. If I'm correct in that, please correct me if you're correct.
The work I did there was all in-kind work. I didn't pay for anything for four years. It's all voluntary. I did it mostly for in-kind. Toward the grants, various grants. We got twelve different grants. Not all of them were in-kind by any means, but. More than one.
Mm-hmm, where are those grant writers now? We should probably talk after. But uh, Tim is kind of a, has been in the past a bit of a seasonal employee. Um, working on a. Okay, I'll call it short-term base. I think it was ten hours a week. Is that correct?
I was supposed to get twenty hours a week.
It was a twenty, okay. That was the former contract, um. So. Mr. Lund is willing to work again in Heritage Park, um. You know, our budget is tight. He's uh. Contributed a lot already and, you know, I feel he has a lot more to offer. Uh, he wants to only. Work within the Heritage Park complex, is that correct?
Correct.
So he's asking us to approve him to. More or less. Following. What he has done in the past, upkeep and just general maintenance of Heritage Park exclusively.
Let me clarify that a little bit. I wanna restore it to the conditions that I finished it at. When I built the park. It's been neglected for too many years. There's too many things that are badly neglected.
Mm-hmm.
I, I wanna hire back in. Just to restart back the way it used to be. That's my goal.
And my question would be, would that be coming out of our Center Rec's budget?
Um. Well, would we hire um?
Citizens operations and maintenance?
Mm-hmm, I would say that it would. Be required to come out of there. I don't see how they could take it out of anywhere else, so um. Heritage is in the Parks and Rec system, so seems perfectly appropriate to me. Any other discussion on the board before we um consider that or?
I don't, I don't personally have the budget that Tim would need to restore it in one summer.
Yeah.
I don't know what the budget is, uh, forty-four thousand dollars a year.
That's for all the parks.
That's for all of ours. That's not for my wages.
Mm-hmm.
But your wages come out of it as well.
Yeah.
And what would those wages be? Um, I think in the past it has been twenty-five.
Twenty-five dollars an hour. Twenty hours a week, maybe first uh October thirty-first. Strictly seasonal.
Twenty hours per week?
Twenty-five dollars an hour, twenty, twenty hours a week. I can exceed twenty hours a week. If I want to. As kind of a minimum number of hours that's would be required to maintain.
Craig, is that something that you maintain when you were maintenance?
I'm sorry.
Is, is the Heritage Park something that you maintain and maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, it's worth it.
Yeah, historically, we have had the maintenance people, we will all work in the parks.
I, I don't, is this, you wanna vote on the hire or no hire at this time?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you said may talk to her, is that the timeframe? So twenty-five dollars an hour for twenty hours a week, about five hundred dollars a week. You also apply for grant monies to go towards Heritage Park for any of the stuff that you want to restore it back to.
Well, that's, that's part of Parks and Recreation's job, to write grants, bring them down there.
I will say this, Tim is also a member of the Parks and Rec Committee too, so he's. He's on Parks and Rec, so.
Yes, I used to chair that board, vote chair.
Mm-hmm.
The original board, and now I'm just a member on the, just being born.
I'd like to recommend that he hold off on a vote right now until he gets to um thirteen C. I'm talking about Craig. And his updated proposal. People, for rather come to the board and to the people.
Well. We could postpone making that decision until uh, we had time to look at that. Um, let's, let's move it down to the end of the.
I, I got a question, Tim. Do you live in township? No, I don't. You do not, okay.
Okay, so why don't we move it to the end of thirteen? We'll, we'll pick up the Tim discussion at the end of item thirteen. Which will be uh. The end of our discussion on thirteen.
Very good.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, we've already talked about the Fault Protection Grant Act and that would bring us to. Any other question? Yes, I have it.
Um, a quick question for you. Before you hire anybody for a maintenance or position or anything to that effect. You do have to put that in the newspaper, take applicant. I, I didn't see it, no, I just was.
Yep, it actually was in two consecutive uh editions, but Tim, Tim was uh an employee last year and he was. Suspended, so technically he's still an employee. So this would not be like a new hire. It would be kind of a reinstated stage line.
Okay.
So the hire, no hire is leaving, it's a reinstated.
I didn't want anything to come about that.
No, no, that's a good point. Thank you. Um, just a, an observation here. I'd like to thank everybody for being forum today. It seems like we've been moving along. Relatively swift and uh without too much. Stuff, thank you. All right, well, uh, moving ahead to maintenance, we've kind of uh. Get out some of it, but uh we have a few more things to. Many of you know my deputy supervisor Andrew here, uh, him and I have. Been completing some of the required maintenance around township. Um, getting areas mowed and cemetery, we have, we had to. Well, that's number B here, but. I put Andrew in charge of the cleanup day there. Thank you. It was uh very well organized this year. I think the only problem with. GFL was a little slow on getting the trucks in. But it did go pretty good. We didn't have any spills, no fires or anything like that.
What about the styrofoam, Jim?
Yeah, the, the last trailer there unloading, right? Guys dumping stuff and. Underneath everything is all this loose, white, puffy styrofoam and. So we spent a half an hour cleaning styrofoam at the end. Yes, we did. And Dave mentioned something about a lot of people um suggesting maybe that we do that again. Um. We'll have to look and see if we can afford that, but I would say this, uh, there's generally a tire grant. Applied for through the Conservation District and they pay for tire pickup. The state of Michigan was late um organizing the uh, yeah, three months late organizing the application process, so. It didn't, we had our thing in May and it won't be until the end of June before the tire grant thing is so. It's possible we could have just a, we don't have the money for a complete trash thing. We might be able to just do a tire collection. Day or maybe some electronics could be added onto that or something, but it all depends on if the grant comes through. GFL would have taken tires. They wanted ten bucks a tire to dispose of. I didn't think that was a worthy thing, so. You mentioned some, but.
I was going to, yeah, I'm bringing those.
Uh, I mentioned earlier, the cemetery's been kind of busy. We had three burials last uh month. And. I can tell you that we found another person buried in the wrong spot in twenty-twenty-one. Um, I was preparing, you know, marking the site with uh Craig and. Turns out somebody was already, uh, and I, I think what happened was in that period between. Oh, maybe when. We had no maintenance person prior to Craig and John. Somebody just confused the south side to the north side or something. Oh, you know, there's A, B, C, and V in each family plot. So if you don't get the right letter or whatever, people wind up in the wrong place. But anyway, I was able to, to talk to owners of. All four of the plots and we were. Switching numbers and letters and we got it figured out and everybody's happy. It actually worked out good, um. Individual is gonna get to be buried next to his sister now, where he wouldn't have been before, so maybe it was meant to be, I don't know. Mm-hmm, also wanna thank Dee because she has been working very hard. We have a B S and A software for our cemetery, which is kind of an online access. If you were looking for a burial of a particular person or whatever. We're entering the information. It'll be available digitally soon. And we're just trying to upgrade and find out who is where and we're finding discrepancies all over the place, um. So I would ask uh commission from the board to look into. Some costs of ground penetrating radar. There are a lot of services out there that do that, that will identify. Right now, we don't even know what plots are available for purchase because we. Don't have concise records right now.
Nobody knows where my aunt is.
What is your aunt's name?
Charles Summerlin.
It's one I've not seen out there. But yes, uh, so the ground penetrating radar will tell us, you know, where there are people that we may not have identified, you know. Not everybody puts up, puts up a stone right away or a monument. So people can be buried and there's no marker at all, so we're just trying to get that updated. So I'm asking the board if I can just present some prices. Do a little research on ground penetrating radar, if that's okay.
Yes.
Yes, Steve.
Um, it's not just the radar though, cause they offer a lot of these things now. They have like the cemetery programs, so they have the ground penetration, but they also will. Give all the information of each gravestone and the person in it. They'll take all the information I put into P S and A. And put it into their online thing, so people who view it from Florida, whatever, you can see, give me it, whoever. Um, so it's not just ground penetration. It's actually kind of cool.
It's kind of like find a grave.
No, I'd agree for blind men, other people to tell you, they're gonna fly a drone over and they're gonna take a picture of each tombstone. The name, they're gonna have all that and then, yeah, the story of the nation, people can recommend it. It's, it's cool.
And they can break, they penetrate the ground to make sure that there is actually somebody.
Yeah, he showed me where they found a body, it's under a road. So, yeah.
Wow. Okay, so um. I think I'll conclude the maintenance report on that. And we'll move on to the zoning administrator. John, you are on.
Yeah, you have my written report there. I too wanna thank all the citizens that took the time that I personally spoke to. To utilize our cleanup. We think they're a little bit of progress. And I think that in my letter I also explained that, you know, they kind of. We've got issues, we know that, and this first year was kind of. Me getting to know the community and see where the major issues are. I know where the issues are. You folks know where the issues are and now it's to proceed. To get some of these major problems resolved. A lot of the little problems. Like I said, I've had great response from the community. A little bit of progress goes along with it, so I'll leave it at that. I am aware of it, of the big ones as well, are as well. They have not gone. Out of sight, out of mind because there are still issues. And I take that very personally and I try to do what's best for this community. Over in that, if you have any questions, I'd gladly help you out.
Any questions for the zoning administrator?
Thank you, Gordon.
All right, well, that's good. Uh, public safety did not meet. Is that correct?
Yes.
I've been doing a bunch of talking here, so I'll let Andrew, our road commission, or road committee chair, uh, give the road commission report here.
Yeah, um, we have had our meeting at this space since.
That's great.
Yeah, um, so, but we discussed uh getting a, a list together of dirt roads. Uh, we wanna start, we've been doing a lot of pavement, so now we gotta start putting in our dirt. Uh, so hopefully we can come up with a list to present to the board, um. Uh, we looked into paved shoulders on hardwood and. Bad because we have a lot of drop offs and. I know Rapid River Township, they had the same situation on Valley. Um, they went to, it's putting path and stone down. It's still not solving the issue. They're still doing the same thing.
I'm sorry, what kind of stone?
Little tiny rock.
It's supposed to turn like concrete that for a while. Um, anyways, uh, we're looking at, hopefully, see if we can afford to do that. Um, Rapid River Township is willing to jump on board to continue it. Um, took out Cass, got down to, they're the only ones left to get to Route seventy-two. Um. Other than that, we got all the projects gonna be happening soon.
Hmm.
Um, I think Underhill got pushed back to June now.
Yeah, I was told early June it'll be complete.
I was told in June, they do.
And then uh currently we're working on um Rapid City Road. Has anyone seen it? We're sealing the cracks with tar. Um, Crystal Beach was started, but our truck blew up, so. Um, wait for a truck to come back um to be able to continue patching and cracks and stuff. So when Helmers gets done with the torch of the bridge, when they start that, we're gonna have that paved, so. Hope we get a seal of cracks before that can happen, um. Last, last drive, that's gonna get paved as well over there.
Thirty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars.
One. Uh, I know that there were surveys already done down in Zimmerman.
Hmm.
Um, they're going further than the original page.
May twenty-first, twenty-seventh is the start date for Zimmerman.
Um, Rapid City Road is June first, so we're targeting it after, hopefully. For weather holds out, we can finish all the projects before. Everyone else starts to do theirs, so.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. And was there any update on the seasonal roads? I know it's still concerns to some of the citizens. Like, many minutes, Ryan?
No, a couple of roads that have been blocked, um, that's gone and burned or.
Yeah, I brought it up at the road commission meeting yesterday. And John Rogers promised me that he's gonna look into that as far as the fence that's been. Put across the seasonal portion of Dundas.
It's the backside of Underhill and Daxville.
The backside of one, yeah, but it's Dundas is one of the fences. Yeah. There was an issue on Snyder Road too, I think of an individual.
That one has arrows now.
It has arrows now.
Where is that?
Okay, uh, just one other thing, I, I, on the road, uh, we have the Brian schedule is out. Our township is number two on the list, so we'll be an early Brian person for Brian Township. But that also means that more than likely. would be a good idea to approve a second brine application. I'm told that uh a brine application for our township, all the gravel roads, which would have twenty one miles of twenty one point forty three mile of gravel road in the township. And it is twenty nine cents a gallon to do that. And they uh to do every road in our township requires forty eight thousand two hundred and forty three gallons of brine. And at twenty nine cents a gallon, it comes to thirteen nine ninety. So it's fourteen thousand dollars to brine all the gravel roads in our township. And that's each application. Yes, it's generally twice a year. It's ten. Yeah, and I know it's pretty dusty out there right now. It has been. So I guess I would make a motion that we approve, and I won't know the date of this, but it would be late summer. I I would think though, you know, do the first one and then turn around and do again. There'll be, you know, a period in between. Uh, I can find out the approximate date when it'll happen, but I'll make a motion that we approve the thirteen nine ninety out of the road fund. It's actually nine ninety and fifty cents. Uh, to apply a second brine within the township. Is there a second?
I would I would be on more discussion than that.
Okay.
Okay, so in in the past, is that what you could have done before?
Yes, sir.
Two applications?
Yes, sir.
And it's coming through.
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right. You can continue.
Okay, uh, there was a motion on the floor to approve a second brine application, cost the thirteen nine ninety and fifty cents. Motion by Jim, second by Bob. Michelle, how are you doing? Bob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Jim is yes. Motion passes. All right, and the uh installment loan, I got the price breakdown of the payments that's just recently came. That's probably not on the agenda, but I'll just pass the information on here. Um, we'll have a total of five payments. Uh, initial payment is a hundred and seventy six dollars. By the way, we're borrowing five hundred thousand dollars. And we're paying this back out of the road millage that has already been approved. So this money's already approved for roads. We have to spend it on roads. Uh, we had enough in our, um, and this is for Hoyle's and Zimmerman Road, which Zimmerman was over eight hundred thousand dollars by itself. But we had enough money in our road fund to pay the down payment, which was half of it. So we have already paid four hundred and twenty eight thousand. There's four hundred and twenty eight thousand still owed. So we're the amount we're borrowing is five hundred thousand and we get approximately three hundred and forty four thousand dollars a year in road millage uh money. And our payments, the highest one is one hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. These are annual payments, uh, March first. Uh, we have two payments a year. One is a what we call the uh principal. There we go, principal. And uh, we have one interest payment. The principal payment for the first year is one seventy six, one twenty five, which is uh gonna leave us approximately a hundred and twenty thousand for additional road projects for that year. Um, there is a additional seventy six hundred and fifty dollar interest payment at the end of twenty twenty six. Then our twenty twenty seven payment is a hundred and seventy two, which will allow us to have a little more money that year for spending or whatever. And then the interest payment in twenty seven is only thirty nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. And our last payment is a hundred and seventy eight thousand nine thirty seven. So the total thing over the whole project, we're gonna be spending about thirty nine thousand in interest. Um, so plan was back when we, almost two years ago, when we were knocking these numbers out and that, um, was to utilize that money and pay it out in four years. The reason that we had the money in the account to pay the down payment was because we had already received the first year of our three hundred and forty four thousand. Added that to what we had in there and that was enough to pay the complete down payment. So we're actually borrowing less than what we originally had planned. We talked about seven hundred and thirty seven thousand is what we were gonna need. But since we had that first year, it turned out less, so. Um, I'm just passing this information on at this point. Um, the municipal bond lawyer we're using is out of Grand Rapids and we're using Huntington Bank, uh, which is one of our banks, so we don't have to like shop around. We already use this bank, so our current bank. So again, this is just information. I haven't signed these documents yet, although we, I did pay the down payment, so we're halfway into it already, so. Just wanted to uh share that information. It is, it is. And we have, you know, a lot of road private. This is a list here. I just show this of all the projects in the county that will be done this year, and we are all the green ones, so we're getting most of the bank for the bucks this year, I guess. All right, I think that's all I have for your road report.
Did you get anything for color? On the gravel.
Gravel? Um, there is a price for gravel per load or whatever, but uh that is on our list as our prioritization list for the township.
I didn't know if they had any room to do anything with it.
What is it? It's chipped for the uh tar chip.
For us?
Uh, it's been left by the Antrim County Department when they did a project, yeah.
So they'll leave it?
They've abandoned it, basically. So we will use it on something.
Probably when they do, that's where we're gonna dump ours, right, for the rest of the year?
If that's where you need, I mean, I can't see making another pot somewhere else, you know, we'll use the same pot. All right, any questions on roads before we move on? All right, we are at sleep advisor correspondence. This'll be quick. Got uh results back from water testing that was done just a couple of days ago. Actually, it was done on May fifth. For the kitchen faucet at the township hall, the community center here, kitchen, and the fire station. All three tested, all three came back. No probide, no bacteria, all good portable water. Um, I got a a visit from a lady from Eagle who was working on the test wells that are over by the fire department because of a spill that took place decades ago over at the gas station. Uh, there was some wells that were contaminated for quite a little while. Uh, it's been more than ten years since they got a positive result on any of those wells, and she is looking to abandon them and close that out. So I gave her permission to go on our property. That's what she was asking. And uh, there's one bush I allowed him to trim because it was going basically right next to the uh, one of the test wells, so. Um, anybody's interested, I have a map here where all the the test wells are. Basically, it's all yeah, the to the west of the fire barn for diamond. Although the fire barn was not involved in the spill. The ground around it was. All right, uh. And the last uh, the correspondence I have here was from our trustee Dave and he has apparently some updates. He thinks?
I do. Um, I hope everyone has the Craig and Moon update in the portfolio. Everyone does, you have your copies. Thank you. So it's self explanatory, but I've been making this guy for three point three years. He just resigned two weeks ago. Um, he did a great job talking to us here. He was loyal, uh, dedicated, safe, never injured. Um, during the winter, he would work seven days without doing overtime. He'd even fire all twenty two hour old buildings. Uh, he didn't have to do that, but he did. He has saved the township, um, tens of thousands of dollars compared to the way you had to maintenance people compared to when we had a fuel bill, twenty four thousand. After Craig became sole maintenance person, that went down six thousand. So that eliminated eighteen thousand dollars worth of fraud. And also, I'm not reading this word for the word this way. I have it here. You can do that and all the time. The cost to have the other maintenance person who was uh, Bill's key. Well, Craig has saved the township that money too. Uh, our inventory has remained where it's supposed to be since Craig has been in charge. Whereas before, we had thousands of dollars, so uh, items in inventory missing were stolen or whatnot. Um, Craig went to come back. Um, you know, while he worked there, he only had five days paid off over a three point three uh month period of time. His mother passed away in two thousand and three, and he got no bereavement pay. Um, a typical guy during the Leo Zimmerman. On the back page of the bottom, it's from a real worthy letter to the court that that night. Um, there's one hint for one year, two weeks for two years, and three weeks for three years of vacation. Craig was about to get the five leases he did not get during the three point three years. Let's get the bereavement pay that he didn't get. And we have been passing hourly increases to other employees and Craig did not get one. Uh, so he likes to make at least what the zoning administrator makes, and that's twenty five per hour. And keep in mind, he's gonna still stay under the budget that we set for him for this fiscal year. Um, I think it's a no brainer that we rehire Craig versus thinking about hiring two part-time maintenance people and all the problems we had with that before.
We'd never have two part-time before.
Yeah, well, we had two maintenance people before.
Not two part-time.
Okay, well, that's a second element. So I'd like to have the board start and go on and see, and I'd have to see what Bob, Jim, and Michelle have to say.
Craig, can I ask you a question? Can I ask you a question? Sure. Why did you resign?
Um, I I thought that I was being um accused and attacked with no evidence at all of anything. And and I know Jim said we've talked about this time and time several times.
Should I?
Okay.
Excuse me, were you accused and attacked by the board?
No.
By who?
The board.
By the public?
The the board was not, didn't even ask the the people presenting the accusations or the complaints for a a proof that what they were saying was true. And in several cases, it was just flat out lies. Um, you guys were told that I did, that Leo did everything I did, plus he did his own mechanical work. And I can tell you right now, Leo didn't do his own mechanical work. The jail crew did the accesses.
And the cemetery, that's not what I asked you though.
Okay.
I asked you who was your, was it the public?
It was the public. And it, but I asked on a bunch of occasions, this has been on for, going on for two or three years now, at least. And I asked the previous board and I asked you guys to at least ask for proof of these accusations. Now, to you guys, what what I'm was saying might be just some kind of my new thing, but it's my name and I have a family in this town that has the same name on it. And they have to live with that.
Were you ever in trouble for any of these actions? You know, okay, um, can the board control what the public doesn't says?
I'm sorry.
Can the board control what anybody in this room does or says?
No, but again, they can ask for proof. If the accusations are continually ongoing, meeting after meeting after meeting, squeeze say just prove it, just bring us some proof. And I just, I just felt like I was at the end. I didn't know what to do. And um it wasn't something I really wanted to do. It took a lot of thought. I I even came out and marked out graves to last Saturday or the Saturday before for for the township it, just because it needed to be done. Um, like I said, I had every intention of being here through the end of my working career, my retirement, and um I live here, I raised children here, I love the township.
You're a great man in the community. I like you. I like what you did for the community. But I guess where I'm going, do you think two or four dollars an hour is gonna change any of how you felt as you were being attacked?
I I I'm sorry, I don't understand.
You want you want to come back with a raise. Okay, we cannot control what the public people do or say. Absolutely cannot. We can just say Craig, you're doing a good job. And what more, what more can we do for you? We can't put you on the wall?
I'm not asking you to put a wall. I was just asking for when these things are brought to the board in public, it goes over that, it goes out on YouTube, and to just defend the employees like you're defending the other employees and ask for proof. If somebody's saying that I'm hanging out and doing nothing at the cemetery, you either owe to me to ask for proof, or you owe it to the the residents to to get rid of me, to get that's what's happening. I I just wanted to be supported by the board, but I came to work every day.
Get support.
I came to work every day
We know that.
and and did the goal was to make this township every day that I worked at the end of the day, it was a better place for you, for the people that traveled through here, and for 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 all our families to be.
No, and and that's not the community. I never said you didn't. I feel so the board always supported you. And again, we can't reprimand or or silence the public. But they have freedom to can say what they want to say. And and the board, I feel, always supported. That's my feeling, right? I I did feel, I do feel that I mentioned on the a few occasions that I had your, or you had my full support. I I felt that you were honest, trustworthy. I mean, we went through a period there where we had some problems and um I don't think that it looked bad on you at the end of that period as far as um the the theft and the the gas purchases and all that, that was completely not on your plate as, you know, as we went on, you know, we reinstated you. I should say, we, the former board reinstated you. And I think we did support you to a certain degree. I mean, I I I can't control what the public said, like Bob said, and we've had that talk and you know, I I wanna support you. I I I felt we had a good connection as far as, you know, working back and forth and 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 talking like that. I I wish um I wish maybe that I would have stopped some of the more harassing behavior.
Of the more harassing behavior that you had mentioned, okay, I brought that to the attention to the people that were. You were complaining about, okay, but I can't control, and I don't think the board can control what everybody does at all times, so. I'm just saying, what would be different in the, in the future, I mean.
What would be different in the future?
Yeah, well, what I'm saying is, like, we can't control the public, so if the public continues to do that, okay. How is it gonna be different going forward, I mean?
The, the difference would have to be that. If you guys can't do anything about it, I can't do anything about it either. I did, I did the job that y'all asked me to do, there was never a time that anybody made a request to me that I didn't do. But. Again.
I would say you completed everything I ever asked you to do, I can honestly say that.
I guess I would just have to say that. I would have to just. Be okay here with these people coming in and. Saying whatever, and. I had to ignore it. I got a few years left of working, and as hard as it is to accept that. These unfounded things just continue, like I said, if it hadn't have been years worth of this, and. Not one more, because, not one more, but two more, that the same basic thing that never, you know. I will give it to the last one, they did the investigations, and you didn't do nothing wrong, let's go back to work, let's, you know, let's not go down. But I guess that's, that's what all I would have to say is that I would just have to accept the fact that these people are gonna come in and say stuff. And unless y'all call me on the board or on the carpet and say that we wanna investigate these complaints, there's nothing I can do about it.
Okay, but with your resignation, just reapply.
I'm sorry.
You can, you can reapply. Reapply for the job.
That's one option.
Okay, I'd like to hear what Michelle has to say, I'd like to have more to add.
I think that's a good option to reapply, we have, we have people that we had around the paper.
Yep, I have two resumes, and Bob says he has one in his car from somebody, so.
Three, so then you just reapply for the job. We did pass the motion, and it would be two part-time people.
True, we can have, we can, we can resend that, and we can.
So what, you just suggest, you know, reapply to that?
I have a comment to make here.
Sure.
One person has maintained everything for over twenty years that I know. When I finished that park twenty years ago, maintenance guy was here, maintained it. Now twenty years later, I go down to the park, I look at it, it's not been maintained.
There's many areas out there.
He's failed to maintain all the parks the way he should. So Parks and Rec asked me to hire him to put the park back in shape. Due to neglect of maintenance. So now you got two people doing one person's job, he just never did their old job, so if you're gonna hire him back. And he maintains the park along with everything else, you only need one person. But if he can't maintain Heritage Park as well as the rest of the stuff, you need two maintenance people. And I'm applying for that second part, Moon Heritage Park.
I will say this, okay, twenty years ago. You know, maybe one maintenance guy could do it, but we have a lot of area to keep up. And we're way behind in almost everywhere you look, in my opinion. You know, I mean, you can just look around this room, I don't think anything's changed in a decade, this is the exact same room we were in ten years ago. Not saying that it's bad or anything, yeah, there's new blinds and there's new lights, that there is, but. I would say that you have a lot more area to cover. So I think it is probably warranted to have two people, I, you know, you can work in two different areas, I mean, it makes sense to have.
We used, we used to say two people, are you saying one full-time like Craig and additional?
We, we passed the motion for two part-time, hang on, three days is up to thirty-two hours.
You said that three times. Yeah, you said that three times, we said that. Well, you know, we heard you all three times. So. On the back page. The letter that Craig signed dated four twenty-two. Keep in mind, this guy should have six vacations by this time. Maybe if he had some vacations over the years, he wouldn't have been so stressed out that he had to resign. Because he resigned under, let me finish, just let me finish. This guy resigned under stress. From not getting the vacations that he is due, he didn't get time off for a bereavement day when his mother passed away. I think it's ridiculous that you guys are talking about. Things that have nothing to do with maintenance, about the public, and, and you know, this and that. We're talking about the duties of maintenance person, the guy is, that's a pretty crap where.
He resigned because of the public, we needed him to resign.
He resigned because he didn't have vacation time, he's a time off to think.
Was there vacation time in the policy?
You have your time to end up.
I'm asking you a question, was there vacation time in the handbook for him? Was there bereavement time in the handbook?
We don't have a handbook, Bob.
We do.
Okay.
And when some people are stuck working to the state of Michigan, they are not entitled to PTO or vacation time in the state of Michigan. If they resign from your job.
I'm talking about before he resigned.
I'm asking a question regarding his employment. Was there a vacation policy, was there a bereavement policy?
Why don't you ask someone that knows our policy, do we have policy, because.
If there is, that that is fall for not taking vacation PTO.
He didn't have it to take. He didn't, there's an employment law that's been violated, he's addressed this, and the letter dated four twenty-two. This guy is, I'm willing to come back to avoid a lawsuit. That he would probably, he would think that, excuse me. He resigned because he wasn't getting his fair share like another employee, look at what Leo got before him. Can we change yesterday, we can't change. No, it's only fair, you set a precedent by the other maintenance person that Craig followed. And then you bring him in, and you treat him like dirt, you don't give him any time off, you don't give him bereavement pay.
It wasn't our board, we did not treat him like yours, sorry.
Well, we are responsible, we inherit what the other board did, and we should, he didn't even get an annual review, Craig. How many annual reviews did he get?
Zero.
Okay, zero annual reviews, during an annual review, that's the time that you talk about, how you doing, do you need vacation? You know, what are your complaints, what's going on, you address things like that, we are employers. The previous board are employers, and they didn't do that, we inherited this problem, and we have to deal with it. We lost, a good man resigned because we don't have personnel policy, we don't have conduct policy.
Person policy over there.
It's very vague, it doesn't address what you.
I'm not saying it doesn't need a.
But, okay, so what are you guys saying, what happened to him is okay, is that what you're saying? He was a guy.
He resigned.
He resigned because of what we didn't have for him as employers. He didn't get any.
I don't get any, you know, at my job, and I.
We're not talking about your job, we're talking about Craig, he worked here, he did a good job.
It's mandated by the state now.
It is not.
All right, let's dial it back here just a little bit, all right. We have number sixteen on our agenda, closed session. I think maybe when we get there, we should have a closed session and discuss this just with the board, and. At the very least, Craig, I would encourage you to reapply, in the meantime, okay, until we. Deliberate this closed session or whatever. And during closed session, we'll, we'll go into a closed session to discuss employment. Or personnel issue. And we'll see if we wanna do any changes other than, other than encouraging Craig to reapply, number one.
We need to know current policy. What's available to reapply, two part-time jobs?
That's what we have posted right now, yeah.
Okay, so you wanna go back into that, and see, then you talk down that, new people, we don't know if they're gonna be. How their attendance is gonna be, Craig, they have three days off in three years from sickness. You can't get better than this.
How do you know?
Pardon me? Oh, okay, so you think that we don't hire two more people, which people you give them one?
We owe it to these people out here to have a closed session and discuss it.
We owe it to these people to let them have a say in what's going on right now, which we just talked about too.
So when you say we're gonna have a closed session, or we're gonna debate and argue over this with that off and with no public people, I'm not interested.
Well, that's the. You know what, I agree with that. I think the public should make up in this.
Well, I'm sorry, this isn't.
I'm gonna make a motion for Craig to reapply.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we rehire now, he's been gone for two weeks, let's just say he had a two-week vacation, why don't you hire him? Motion up for it.
Just gonna say, we got several motions on the floor.
Okay, you make, go ahead, make the motion, I'm gonna make my motion.
Okay, I'll say, get your motion, and Craig should apply, I think that's worthy.
Okay.
So it's valid, and Jim. All right, Michelle, how do you vote, if Craig should reapply?
Craig should reapply, yes.
Michelle, yes, Dave?
Um, Craig.
No, I'm asking you.
Okay, no.
Okay. No. Bob? And Jim, yes. All right, that motion passes, board encourages you to reapply, at the very least, we'll still be discussing at some point. I'm sure when we hear another motion, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we rehire Craig full-time, just as he was. Without having to reapply.
Motion by Dave?
For the record.
To reinstate Craig.
That's right, because full-time status he was, the budget already decided for him. And we bring him back, you're not gonna find a better guy than this, and he's gonna. Yeah, yeah, okay, he's gonna, it's gonna cost the township way less money.
Okay, is there a second to reinstate Dave, or excuse me, Craig? Is there a second to reinstate?
Great.
Okay, hearing nothing. That motion fails.
That's fine, it's on record.
I would be for more discussion on this, I prefer closed session, I don't think, you know, we're wasting these people's time to sit here and go back and forth and holler each other. Is there any more motions on this subject? Okay, hearing none. We have a pick up back for Mr. Tim Lund. Hire as a part-time individual exclusively heritage park to. Refurbish or reclaim that product and get it updated.
What is going? What is updating?
Well, bringing it back to its. Yeah, to higher standard than it is now, I would say, you know.
Oh, fields are not playable, so you know, we gotta put them at least back to that.
Well, I think that's my goal, yeah.
Go ahead.
Can you make a similar plan, just like something that, you know, I mean, I think what she's getting at is like, what's the goal? You know, where are we gonna head now, just something you can, it was, you know, I mean, you know, what needs to be done, what your expectations are.
You know, I, I know you said the fields weren't flammable, but I kinda disagree a little bit, they are, you know. To a degree that we have two teams right now that are playing on them, and I know it's not perfect, I agree with you, there's a lot of room for improvement, I can give you one. But I don't think it's unplayable.
Well, you did a little bit of work to get these two teams on there, right?
Yes.
Prior to that, we did work.
I agree, I think we've come a long way in a couple weeks, so.
Yeah, this volunteer stuff is good stuff.
Yes.
Thirteen thousand dollars, five hundred dollars for twenty-six weeks. Thirteen thousand out of your forty-four thousand budget for a person.
The five mil just for operations in.
Of all of us, not just heritage, so that would be a large chunk of the whole budget for one.
I think Craig has some.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Again, I've mentioned before meetings, I've asked Parks and Rec, I just joined, by the way, so. I'm still working on them, I've asked numerous times to get a list of things to do, not just Heritage Park and all the other parks. They give me nothing or give us nothing, okay? And this would be clear of some of these questions right over at Ask It. I met with. Andrew and I discussed, and we decided to get some estimates from other entities. I met with the owner of Dairy Do on Wednesday, and he's gonna come to the Parks and Rec meeting. And give us a plan, an idea, I contacted Michigan State University. They, I'm gonna get some pictures from Andrew and send them to them, so they can give us somewhat of a plan, so. There's just been no real plan, everybody says, well, things have been run down, well, nothing has really been given of schedule of things, other than. Molding, so, so Parks and Rec has really dropped them all, among many other things.
And so. I don't think most people would disagree, I think.
My question, who makes up the volunteer committee for Parks and Rec? I mean, how many people are part of that committee, because when I look at this, two people are leaving. The Parks and Rec, one, what was it, the end of June?
Yeah, there, there's a pregnancy and someone's traveling out of the country for a long period, so they're losing.
So then what is the remainder of Parks?
It would be Michael Span, who is the chairman. Josh Keel.
Okay.
Primarily works Patriot Park only, pretty much, you know, kinda like Tim was one park only.
Okay.
Uh, there's Dave, and me, Tim.
And Joanne.
Oh, Joanne too, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, when do they leave?
Uh, they just.
Second one.
Went to the second.
Second one, we just switched it, I had a question. Next plot.
Where?
Right here.
And who's the board representative to Parks and Rec?
It was you.
Yeah.
You weren't at the last meeting, no.
Yeah, this one, you.
Well, that was the second meeting that we reported.
Tim, do you. Could you be efficient at fifteen hours a week and get things done?
You know, the hours. I could work fifty hours in one week.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand, but I mean, if it's the total for the.
We're trying to work on the budget.
On the budget end of it. On the budget end of it. Um. Do you think it would be efficient for you at fifteen hours a week, do you think you can get things done that? Yeah, any of, oh hell, we, it's. I understand, you know? One, I'm just looking at that, the budget standpoint was. But uh, you under a little pressure here because these feel like running for the ballgames, which are gonna start shortly. I understand, I mean, I was supposed to start May first to get this thing ready, and here we are, fourteen days, and I, I haven't even started yet. And you guys are running out of time, so. The first month or two in the season is where you need all the work, if you. After July, there's pretty much nothing to do down there except mow, okay? So you're concerned about the budget and everything, and if you pay me for the first two months and that's it, and that's when the money runs out. You've accomplished what you need to do. End of that fifteen hours a week.
We got three people on the.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Um, I know, I mean, where's the budget at for Parks right now? I mean, where's the money at, because did they ju, aren't they covering the playgrounds?
We are paid.
Okay, so that leaves them at how much?
Twenty-two thousand.
So now it's on twenty thousand for Parks.
But they still have the quarter, right?
Yeah, that's next year.
Yeah.
So the remaining this year, you have twenty-two thousand?
Um, I was doing the Christmas job, and Mr. Lund, I'd never met him before, and he came in and he says, I'm planning for, I've definitely come back this year and add the paper for more, and I said, please, please, the more. So I mean, there it was, right there, and then I started learning about what we did and the park and all that, and I'm thinking. We need this guy, because he was a vision in the first place, there was stuff we did, like, we want, we did the paving, we paid for that. We found out that wasn't good, like the original green was supposed to be where you could write boards on it, so we, we canceled, but we paid them. He was, when he left, he was edgy. I've for four years tried to get, made this the end of that, that was everything he wanted, and he had a, a good share of that before the edging broke down. He just knows how to do, I said, how about, how about the, um, he knows how to turn on this, turn on this, all that, and we don't have to hire him anymore. So for me, I thought it was a good idea to have him come in there because he's done it before, and he's got a heart to get it back up again. He's, I don't know, I thought he was close to eighty, he said it would be rough, he wants to get it up and going, and that's what Parks wants. Um, when we came on, it was mow road. And.
So, again, I don't wanna be utopian, I don't wanna be redundant here, but we need to get some lists together, things that have to be accomplished. And that's why we got all the Dairy Do and we're getting all Michigan State, and that will get the stuff with these professionals giving us the input of what to do. And, 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 you know, there's no less, I, I, again, I've been asking for two, three years, and I get nothing from Parks and Rec. They look at me like I'm a prophet.
I need to comment on what Dave's talking about. He's saying that you need a maintenance guy down there, which would be me. To run the show, that's not what he's saying, it's my, yes, that's not what he's saying, he just, he just looked at me and nodded and said, no.
What I'm saying is. Parks and Rec needs to be more efficient, they're just terrible. They don't do, they really don't get anything done, if you really look at their history, they don't do nothing.
Okay, one last one, Dan?
You need a chair.
Parks and Rec needs to step up. Tim's a great guy, he does a great job, where's the budget? Let's just go to the budget, I mean, you could be wonderful, and I don't doubt for a minute he's awesome, he'll do a magnificent job on it, where's the budget?
Have, have you a recommendation from the chair of Parks and Rec? What's that been helpful?
Well, at the last Parks and Rec meeting, um, they seemed receptive to allowing Tim to continue to, you know, do his work. Um. Budget-wise, like Dan was saying, um. Well, number one, some of that upkeep comes out of the maintenance budget, so it's not all Parks and Rec.
I thought we were talking about it was.
Uh, depending on what it is, I'm sorry.
It should be Parks and Rec.
Well, yeah, but I mean.
Maintenance guy should charge out, or you should be Parks and Rec.
Yes, that, that's exactly how it happens.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So interpretation that they were receptive to it, no. That's not, that's not. That's not the interpretation Dave, uh, held generally.
It was, Gabe was for it last year, he worked for us a lot of the summer.
No, I'm talking about that last meeting, not last year.
I would say that, you know, I thought people were kind of receptive to him having, you know.
Actually, what was said is they volunteered to, or they didn't want to make a decision, they felt that they weren't, uh, in a position to make the decision, but it's set in the monitor, so that's really brutal. So we volunteered back to the board. That's what I.
Okay, so it's in our hands. Number one, I can say that we, we do not have enough money to pay you for the whole amount you were talking about earlier, the. Two hundred and sixty hours or whatever.
Yeah, I, I gotta clarify this a little bit more here. My wages would pay for what you're farming out right now, and you're paying other people a whole lot more money to do what I would be doing down there. Freshness, turning down the irrigation, maintaining the irrigation, turning it off, that sort of thing is part of the maintenance job. You said hiring people to come in and start it up, shut it down, do the trails, all the sort of stuff, you've been farming out. In the maintenance job.
Not this, not the trails, we have.
But the sprinklers.
Yeah, it would require that, sure.
If I heard.
It, well. I don't know how to make a motion to incorporate all these things we've been talking about into one, you know, concise thing. You can make a motion to table it.
Well, we gotta work this stuff, we've got.
We, we've got applicants, we got Craig that's ready to come back, you can just consider him for a two-week vacation that he hasn't had in three years. There's that, the motion that, if you want to go back.
Craig, go ahead, down the floor, Craig.
Yeah, I started in twenty-twenty-two. Those ball diamonds had been neglected over the years, they were in a toxic shape. I did everything I could do, it's, it is beyond me to do everything and to do the ball diamonds, I spoke about that when. I didn't know where to start, um, when I was hired, they told me no chemicals on the ground kill grass. Um, tried various things, it didn't, didn't work, but. Last summer, um, and uh, it can be verified, there was a lot of complaints, once the department was taken over by, uh, Mr. Lund. He'd never mowed, he never weed with, uh, he shut the irrigation on for six weeks, which, if you talk to Christine, when she came and got his keys. He told, he said, by the way, he shut it off for six weeks. Um, we had more complaints in the first few months than we had had in years over there. The way the park looked, now, again, the ball diamonds, that's a whole nother thing. I maintain the, everything, I get all the mowing, all the trimming, all the, all the trash pickup. The ball diamonds were beyond me, and I tried on several occasions to get a company to come in and even give us an idea of what it costs, and, and the timeframe to put them back at work.
Hmm.
Um, they wouldn't respond to me because I didn't make this, and don't have the authority to make any decisions. Um, but to sit here and say that I did not take care of the park, that is absolutely unfounded, that is patient. Um, I, I was out there all the time, uh, everybody noticed it, we took good care of it, the ball diamonds were beyond you. That, that's all I can say, it was this gangly.
Hmm.
Um, Chair Paul, so we have a question.
Due to timeline, you gotta get things going in thirty days, approve something for thirty days and read this in it. I mean, I, I think you're at a timeline where you have to, you're dragging on a third day, child, with nobody.
Then we'll be in same boat at the end of the year.
Yeah, I'm working on. Yeah, I was just gonna say, we got volunteers, I got good people in this community. I got, and that's why I'm showing you the progress that I've already done.
Are you from the Latina?
Thank you for coming.
No.
Yeah, but he's not volunteering, he's definitely.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I was getting back charged for maintenance, as if maintenance was doing, that's all we have right now.
But it was all free, oh, good.
Well, uh.
If I may, it seems like you need two maintenance people, because Craig said he couldn't handle it in addition to all the other duties.
Yep.
Things have changed over the years, like you said.
I think so, yes.
Not Craig's fault that he couldn't get to all of it? You know, if you did all you could and still couldn't get it out, then you obviously need another maintenance.
Maybe, maybe five hours a week. From Parks paying for, which, that's one, and having Craig that full-time, that might make sense. But what you're asking for, twenty hours, you're just talking about, that's half of what, that's half the pay that this guy got.
It's a part-time job, it's for.
Yeah, I know that, uh, you see, he did, he covered everything and kept our budget, as always possible during the time that he, that sensibility has left. Now, if you're, if you wanna do the ball parks, I mean, the maintenance, you're saying you need all that time? Oh, absolutely, no. The manicure is late, I mean, come on, that's, that, we can't afford that. And if Parks and Rec doesn't have the money. They just don't have the money, as a matter of fact, and the playground equipment, they got a break, we should have got them for all of the money, but we. We, we let them have ninety-eight hundred dollars of our money, it was originally, you're nodding your head down there, thank you. The original amount, we were gonna get the whole amount back, but that's not what happened at the last showdown. And so, and what we should have done is got all the money back, and then if they, we wanna give them ninety-eight hundred dollars, then we do it that way, we did that wrong.
My understanding is they were given thirty thousand dollars for real prior to board, and then.
Okay, we're, we're on the discussion about him.
When we're talking money budget too, so don't try to drown out, don't try to drown out what I'm saying, it makes sense in the whole picture.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, motion to bring Tim back on for sixty hours, for thirty days, we'll visit him every thirty days. Hmm. That'd be a big mistake, you got, you go in the wrong direction by not hanging, it's certain stuff. He's already an employee, he would be reinstated, it's not a hire.
Okay, so how, how much does he get paid right now? How much have you been paying the last sixty days?
Nothing.
Okay, so he's an employee, he's paid nothing?
He would.
Let's clarify that.
He would be reinstated, just like you're talking about Craig being.
Okay, and it's gonna be paid out of Parks and Records?
It has to be paid.
Okay, and they can afford that?
That's what we're here for, to decide right now, what we can afford and can't afford. I don't see how we can do twenty hours, I, I don't see that as even a possibility.
He told us up to twenty hours.
It's already very flexible, you know, I could work one hour, it would be fine.
Hmm.
And you land.
We could work until the money runs out.
That, that's, that's a room.
You know, it's not been thirty, sixty days, but. You, you guys are losing sight of what's happening here, we, we need to keep this park up a month. And you're, we're in a money park. Maybe it's easy as possible here.
Okay, Dave, one comment, and then we're gonna do something here.
I agree with Jeff. It needs to be done, but. The season's already, Michael said, started, so we need to do improvements to get professionals to give us the idea of what to do. Dairy Do was coming to.
I'm helping with hard days here.
We've got Dairy Do coming to the Parks and Rec meeting on, on, on the ninth with a presentation. Michigan State is going to look at things to do, we are not gonna, anything we do, we're not gonna improve that.
All those things are gonna cost money too, Dave. Just saying. Just saying, we got a budget for that too.
Okay, well.
Dairy Do's in free.
About twenty?
I just want you.
The season's basically over, we need to just ask the thing and as much as we can.
I'm not saying we don't need to do something, don't make me sound like I'm not wanting to do something, I'm trying to figure out what we have available budget-wise to make this work, or not, uh, uh, it's just a money thing there.
I, I have a question, so in the past, when we worked on that, how many teams came and played ball?
Zero.
Zero, so now we have two teams coming, was there, um, I mean, you. So we pay out to those teams when they come in, do they pay?
Right now, and this is a discussion between the coach that's been working with us, and his kids have been pulling weeds in the infield. After every game, they run the rigs around and they're, you know, participating in the.
Like a barter system.
At this point, with the condition that they're in, we did not charge them, they're more or less just practicing right now, the games actually haven't started, all of these scrimmages.
Yeah, so when this all start, we face, we're wise. I just, I didn't think like the ball field was down in the late one line, boys were younger, and they played ball, and the hot walk-in games were coming in and going, and, you know, um, comments. That was, I was just wondering how many teams in, they play the play better, um, is there a benefit to? You know, the township can help with, you know, different, or with the basketball there, that has nothing to do with baseball field. So we don't do like they do, say, in Andrew County where they have the basket, so we have all the baseball teams, it's, it's nothing like that, it's not very.
No. It's gonna be.
Alright, um, board needs to make a decision here, uh, even if it's just a table for a while, or what we're gonna do, but.
I think we're gonna have to look at our budget and see how much money we actually realistically have in Parks and Rec, and how much we have. They, they gave us a whole charter for our money that they have committed, and again, like, I'm not opposed to the township, um, like, Freedom Park. A step, you know, is bad, I, they come at us, you know, like, in terms of the public, I don't have an issue for the township approving to have it fixed. I don't. I would not go for, oh, there's a step broken, we need a whole new set of steps, it kinda seems to be the way things go, which are way more expensive than just fixing a step. So, again, I, I think that, um, we, as a whole, you know, all my friends are gonna have to discuss. Again, where we are gonna go, we made a motion, we were gonna have two part-time people. And so now we're revisiting again, you know, what we're gonna do. It's like, we, we've already passed that motion, so, um, again, we're just beginning that horse, so if we go, we won't be all agreed.
Hmm. Uh, I will just say this, okay, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion here. Just so that we have something to vote on, and we'll load it up, or we'll load it down, and let the chips fall where they may. I'm gonna, I'm making a motion that, uh. We hire Mr. Lund for five hours a week. At twenty-three dollars an hour, which was the former maintenance individual's rate. And.
Over the month, but many.
And I was just gonna say, for the next six weeks, which would take us. You know, pretty well into the baseball season, you were mentioning that come July, it's just mowing. Obviously, five hours a week isn't gonna, you know, uh. Get everything done that you probably want, but. It's a start, I, I think, um. I'm sorry?
That's a foreign day, he was in the process for, for, what he was, he was painting dugouts and.
I understand, okay, I'm not saying anything about the quality of work that we're giving here, we're trying to figure out a budget that will work, okay? I'm offering a residue, or a motion, five hours.
Yeah, and then that can be done in a day, five hours, uh, I mean, five hours and a week, and one day, or two and a half hours in two days, or whatever.
He's gonna volunteer more anyway, and I feel, but, okay, so anyway, like I said, I'm throwing it out there so we have something to vote on, it's a yes, or it's a no, or we move on. Okay? I don't think we should pay him more than we were paying our initial maintenance guy, I think that would be.
And what did he agree to, to be paid when he worked before, he's still in the, but just hasn't been paid?
He was paid twenty-five prior.
We say twenty-five dollars by dollar sign, you can't expect somebody to, who's been off, to go, oh, yeah, I take a, hey, cut, cut two dollars an hour, and then all of a sudden, they. Cut around twenty hours, and he got to the five. A cut around twenty hours and then come to the budget.
Yeah, like I said, I was throwing it out there as a starting point.
Twenty-five dollars an hour and five dollars a week and we.
That's basically. Okay, so that is the motion, um. Five hours a week, six weeks. Twenty-three dollars an hour, or excuse me.
Twenty-five, what do you mean for?
That's what my agreement is, twenty-five. I've employed at that, so let's keep it at that.
Okay, motion's out there, um. A motion. Five hours a week. Twenty-five an hour. For six weeks. Can we revisit?
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That's the total?
Total.
Wow, that seems low.
Well, I was gonna say four weeks, and that was five hundred dollars, a few more weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that motion is out there. Tim Lund, uh reinstated. Five hours a week, twenty-five dollars an hour for six weeks. Let's put an end date on that. Six weeks will take us through June twenty-eighth, which is almost July first.
Uh what would be the start date? May first.
I would say tomorrow.
No, for this, what would be the start date? Because I voted the twenty-sixth of June, you're saying the twenty-eighth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it would be the twenty-sixth if you went Thursday, Thursday, yeah. I was just figuring end of the week, so. Well, we we can pick a date anywhere. I mean, we. We work in five hours a week, so we make it to to June first.
You may mean the lot of hours.
Yeah, sorry, July first.
Well, so then, is it six weeks? And then, do you want to start tomorrow, or do you want to Monday or or Thursday, you know?
What is your schedule? We should be asking.
Start at May first. To answer your question, you guys are really dragging your feet on that Monday.
Monday or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
May sixteenth, okay.
So that takes us to the uh twenty-seven.
Okay.
Of June.
Okay. Okay, we'll 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 end that at June, uh June twenty-seventh. We'll revisit it. We'll revisit it at our June nineteenth meeting. How's that sound? Which will leave about a week for that. For us, and we'll see where we're at at that point, okay? Everybody understand the motion? Let me read it back. Tim Lund, hire, reinstated, five hours a week, twenty-five dollars an hour for six weeks, ending June twenty-seventh.
We're gonna hear some minimum five hours. I can I can work more than five hours in a week, you know?
Yes.
I just won't exceed the budget for the end date. I might get all the hours in in the first month.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You understand?
Okay, so where's our dollar?
Because I can't.
We're gonna say the maximum of thirty hours, or you see. Maximum of thirty hours between now and June seventh.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll add that into the motion, the maximum of thirty. Thirty hours.
They work weekends as well, three days, so you know, it doesn't.
Right, right. Okay, I'll make that motion. Michelle?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
You said yes, Dave?
Yes.
Say yes.
Yeah, yes.
That motion passes. Well, that was a tough one, wasn't it?
He's hard.
Comes hard.
Yeah. Okay.
First, let's get a start. Um, I haven't seen the.
Well, I got two in my. Again, it's appeared only for two weeks. I was gonna consider maybe we throw one out and you're reviewed. Okay, and the last piece of uh stuff.
Well, well, you know, I had a lot of things in uh thirteen C, and we just got to create.
Okay.
So um for the spectrum update, we have an account that we've been paying for since two thousand nineteen. And um. This is co-ex mine. Again, it appears that we're paying for something that we already have a duplicate service for under our. Fiber and um main account at the hall. It covers um the community center as well. So we're we're gonna be paying two hundred a month. For um. They say a fax line. The company that you're checking, you said we don't, you know, we don't have faxing. You know, we're paying for something that we don't have.
You do have the ability to fax.
But but we can do that with fiber, and this is for co-ex.
We do have the ability to fax right now.
I know, but he touched the account, and we're not using it that way. He kind of verified that we're paying.
I just.
This is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna give you an update on spectrum. And I'm gonna let you guys take it from there. Okay, because I've done with it. As far as board meeting rules and guidelines um in the time that we have right now. And also, we don't have, I'm gonna I'm gonna table that. Employee personnel policy code conduct toxic workplace environment, that needs to be put to the top of the next agenda. That's a serious topic. And as far as policy for maintenance and zoning, um that as well. So that'll wrap up it. See, but for for the next meeting. I want that to be put at the top. I'm tired of the items I bring up being twisted at the end, and then we run out of time.
That is not true, Dave. I put you at the very beginning.
Jim, let's just put it to the top of the next agenda, that's your map, Ben.
Yeah, but don't sit there and say, I'll put you at the end all the time.
But just leave it at that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna leave it as exactly how I'm saying.
Good.
I have put you at the front of the agenda multiple times, you know, that's the thing, I always put you at the end.
No, that's okay.
And you can, I can add on this policy. So I gave you the ordinance for zoning.
Yep.
So again, if we start messing with zoning, it's the zoning ordinance, not an employee policy. So it's a larger undertaking, it's we would have to have the attorneys involved. It's our ordinance, not. An employee helps.
Right.
Okay.
Well, whatever we have currently needs to be looked at and modified over time. I I don't care if we have it right now. It needs to be, it's very vague, and there's a lot of gray areas, and there's a lot of things that are in doubt that need to be addressed. And it's also the same with what happened in Craig, because we don't have proper policy. He went through something he shouldn't have done, and someone else should not have to go through that. So that period of the next year. Okay?
Are you finished then?
I already said a lot.
Okay, uh I don't think there's any support for this, but this uh second addition to the uh agenda way back at the beginning. Uh Sheriff Whiteford is uh. Offering twenty-twenty-five, forty-six dollars and twenty cents an hour will cost if we decide to rehire the sheriff's department. In a contract. Twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six, it'll be forty-seven, thirty-eight. And um. He has a little statement here. We have continued services in good faith of a contract renewal, but would have to wind down the hours if the board chooses not to renew. The contract, so. Just throwing out this, what he, those are his words. That would put us at old business. Angus position has been in newspapers for two weeks. I'll mention that, I've got. Couple resumes and uh I think I just told three. Uh IDB, Art of Fund allotment was filed and entered into the portal. And we are good to go until April of twenty-twenty-six, where we will have to. Uh we had one portion of the B S and A contract that we did not fully pay for. So that will be, the remainder will be paid in twenty-twenty-six, so have to file again a little bit in twenty-twenty-six. Treasury. Um people, I see here, they asked us to make a resi- or. Resolution to, I'm trying to find what it was here. What was it, Michelle, that you asked us? I don't seem to have it here.
I'm sorry, what exactly?
What was the treasury people asking us to make a motion for?
Um, they wanted to, I believe I can find it here in that one, so.
I thought you did, I don't know.
I'll grab it. My point is writing everything in notepad, so.
Consultation work?
It should be on.
They want us to make a res- uh motion, get it in the minutes, to approve. Of the bookkeeper.
Who approves getting.
Condition uh additionally, yes, condition on condition of the state reimbursing this.
Yes, to be in the contract. So we would go, we would pick from three. So locally, we have Plankton, we have Raymond, and there was one that was at the M T A event. So we would be able to get quotes from them, but there would be a contingency that we would only accept that quote. If the state approved it for reimbursement, takes the state roughly two weeks. And I'd like to see it moving forward because we're gonna be having the S and A in August, so I'd like to have all of that stuff. You know, displaced by that. So if we could um set a motion to get the bids, that that would be a really good.
So I'll make a a motion to obtain bids from the three companies, Plankton Moran, Raymond, whatever.
And then I would have to get the name of the township on financial that that.
Yeah. Okay, uh motion to get that, um. For going over our financials.
Yes, it would be scrubbing the budget and sending financial files.
Contingent on.
The state of Michigan, treasury, you can. Maybe those two, two weeks.
All right, is there a second?
I'm second.
Back under you.
Yes.
Uh Dave Cost, yeah. Michelle? And Jim, yes. Okay. All right, uh I put something on here, B S A update and timeline. I don't have anything on there yet right now. I think Dee was working on.
Right, we're we're waiting. It should be coming up. Um I think that June, June, it should be on our calendar when we. When we meet with them.
Okay.
And um I'll let Laura know with the state so she can set something up so you and I can be on the um. Zoom call.
Okay, okay.
So she'll, you know, her group will provide us the next step that we need to.
Perfect. All right, so I'm not sure, I, that motion passed on the uh. Thing, I don't know if I said that or not, so the motion passed, um. Hospital conversion, meeting of incorporators, next one is May twenty-second, uh. Just wanted to pass that on. Uh should have some information on the June meeting on that. Uh I went down, we needed some gas. We used all the gas in the vehicles and the mowers and all that, and. First time I had to buy gas, so I didn't know how exactly to go about doing that, so. I was told the village market hasn't accounted for us. I went there. And the three names on the account were Tom Backers, John Bielski, and Craig Van Loon. So my name wasn't on there, so I was fortunately uh. Smart enough to talk my way into it. They were, they went ahead, I promised them that we would update that, so.
So we would have to have a motion or a.
Yes, we need to get in our minutes, and I just, I think uh maybe. You know, we should limit it to about three people. I'm thinking Andrew, my deputy supervisor would be one. We have a maintenance guy, but I don't know that if the. Five hours that you're working that we want you to go down and get gas, I'm at five hours, I would rather have you working in the park, so I think would be uh.
It shouldn't be a problem, but.
We'll make sure you have gas.
I don't wanna get involved with that mess that's happened before.
Okay, uh I'm going to ask that I be put on that list of authorized signatures, and I would. Anything to me, other suggestions for other names?
I'd love to be on it.
And I'm just curious what. Fuel or whatever.
Well, right now, we don't have, um, we don't have a maintenance person, right?
That's correct.
You're gonna be available? Fill the gas cans?
Well, that's what I have been doing, yes.
Is that where you just want that exclusivity, or you want another board member?
I'm asking for another name.
More than a name.
Okay, but. All right, I'll I'll put it on. Um. And can I be more active between board meetings, right? More what? More active?
So so didn't, so wait a minute, are we getting gasoline?
I'm not saying you're not active. I I don't know that you're super active with.
Yeah, okay.
So.
That's amazing.
For getting gasoline, there's gonna be people that are on there that are gonna lose it, right? Yeah, there is a gasoline.
Yes.
For the township.
Correct.
Gas can, okay. All right.
Yes.
Jim?
We want to make sure.
Go back it up and put me on there, because it looks like I'm the only maintenance person, so. Not only, uh like, you're you're five hours a week, we don't need you going to a fun goy target. You don't tell me.
He is, him, I was saying.
I already have it, yeah. I think this, the list is fine. Andrew, myself, and Dave.
Okay, you're married.
I'm gonna ask that we. To get it in the minutes as a motion. I'm gonna make the motion that we point Andrew, myself, and Dave Cost as.
Just policy clarification, so if the truck needs gas, I can get a hold of you guys, take care of it.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Sure. You, Sean. I I mean, we we could, you are using the Dodge truck.
I do.
I would be, um, I wouldn't be opposed to putting you on there as a.
I would say yeah, there, I mean, I would put him on with.
Okay, so I amend my motion to Andrew, myself, and Dave Cost, and John West, to be authorized purchasers at. Village Market for gasoline and diesel.
Is it on our post-it? I'll just mark down today.
Jim, yes. Dave?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
All right. Okay. The, I did mention earlier about the insurance risk individual that we um. And again, in compiling this, I'll get that to the next meeting. One thing I I I was unsure, and I put on D here, do we need to have another meeting to discuss some of these issues that we have?
All other current policies and policies, before we call for another meeting.
Okay, I think that's a good idea. I'll try to work that together. Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of that, what you're talking about, those policies were in that Michigan power plant. And they have a lot of samples of different policies that are working in other places and.
But now, I I would like to see us, um, also when you talk to treasury, you talk. But now, I, I'd like to see us, um, also when we talk to Treasury, talk to them about the HR and have.
Our plan has a complete HR program that we can ask any question we want.
And it's free.
Yeah, it's part of our, uh, paid insurance, so we have consult with that.
So you don't wanna think about human resources and, and, and reimburse us for us to. I mean, as we came, I asked all the question, who's gonna hype it all up? I mean, how many days?
Well. I tell you what, let me dig into that insurance thing and some of the policies there and when, when we have eyes on it, we'll, we'll decide whether or not we want to involve the state with the HR stuff too, so. All right, no additional meeting then? Is there a request for a closed session?
No.
I don't think that this point, a closed session would help us. All right, closing, board member comments? Any? Throw it out there. I don't. Anybody have any comments closing?
Well, I, I just wanted to circle back, um, because I was actually at the interviews when Adam and John, and the responding gentleman.
Dan Kelly.
They need to be interviewed.
Yes, I was there too.
So, I mean, there was a lot of stuff thrown around, how we're, like, doing something. This is the prior board that appointed you out of the three people that were interviewed and, you know, none of us. So I don't think that there's any, like, conflict of interest from any of us on the board, so I just wanted to circle back to that. That was it.
Yeah. I have one comment, and it's, um, partially related to a comment that Dave said earlier, and that, uh, I was in complete support and, uh, locked at the hip with the West Brothers, okay? I'm just gonna say you don't know what you're talking about.
I'm gonna say you.
The brothers? Whatever, okay?
Yeah.
This is my comment.
Yeah, all right. Good.
I've had many disagreements with both of these guys. And when we come into this meeting, I don't care if my brother's sitting there, okay, I'm gonna do the best of what is, I believe, is for the township. So, you can say whatever you want, okay? I'm telling you that when I come in here, yes, I have friends everywhere, but I'm dealing with township stuff, and I'm not showing favoritism in any way, shape, or form, okay? If somebody's wrong on something, it's my duty and my obligation to point it out, and I will. So that's my comment.
Oh, I would have fun to say about your comment. Not right now, though.
All right, then, it is closing public comment, and I wish. Joanna, first round?
I mostly, you're probably do not know, but when Leo resigned in August, we only had maintenance until January when we hired the crack. I was the maintenance. Joe Keys came after his forty-hour work weekend mode. Sometimes with a flashlight to get it done. I did the weed, I mean, the trimming, did all that. I picked up garbage every single day until we shut that down when it was needed. I'd go, I heated drive with the, the pickup truck. I had this big, so lots of times I used my van. I have pictures of Lake Street, and my van filled full of garbage. And I never, I didn't even think of asking for a donation slip. But we saved, Joe and I saved, whatever we were paying before we hired John and Craig, it was supposed to have ninety-some thousand dollars or two of that for the year. So you take off four months, five months of that with us working, doing all the maintenance between us, keeping it going. How much do we save the township? So that's, I'm, I'm like off work, and I'm willing to get that part going. If I have to volunteer to help him, which I did last year, we had, we got five hoses to fill the trees. And he was pulling them, and I took my golf cart down there, and I says, hop on this, we'll pull it with the golf cart.
Yes, you did.
We got it done. I'm willing to help him make that part. No cost to anybody. Just give me a waiver. To help him get that up, get the, we have to pay the dugout, whatever we need to do, I'm willing to do it. I have not drawn a nickel over my salary that I had for four years. It stuck for the twentieth of February when I had to fill in as a tax, pick up taxes.
Right.
That's all I did. So my heart is to get this township going, get it cleaned up, get it looking good, get it proud like it was years ago. And that's what people in this community wanna see. That's why the islands are being done. We just signed up our seventeenth volunteer. Let's start out with no volunteers. We've got seventeen people adopting in the island.
And they look. The islands look great. I went through this morning.
Yeah, and they're excited. If you'd like to contribute, we need to have community pride where people step up, say, I wanna help. I'm getting people calling me to see if those islands available. I mean, this is exciting. So that's my statement.
Okay, any other comment, Jim?
Last one, uh, you guys are looking for water system. I have a barrel that, and tanks that while I come on back to golf cart. I believe there's, there's no question that the township should seriously look at a golf cart for all the different things you do at different events and parks. It's, it's just, when you have them, you'll never live without one. I'll tell you that much. I have them every location now are handy. But you can put a fifty-five gallon drum across the back, thirty-four, thirty-five, forty gallons in it. That will wash water massively out in the hurry. You're free to use it, of course. I'll strap it on any cart anytime. And I also have a small trailer, a four footer, with a tank set up in there as well that can be pulled with a golf cart as well. Uh, I'll own the trailer and the watering mechanism anytime you want it. Uh, I just don't have a spare finger to pull it. You said you have a small tractor, have it to township all down here. Everybody wins.
They have a plastic fifty-five gallon.
Yeah, we got one ready for me.
I got one, I'll set up a garden on the chair inlet, fill inlet, help foot, more than what.
I have a trailer that we can pull one.
Yeah, whatever. If you need something, call me on the watering, and I'm glad we can sort that in.
Okay, any other public comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was, um, just say something, um. I'm a former clerk and a deputy clerk. And there's a lot of information in that office. None of you seem to know anything about. I'm asking, don't you know there's a whole book that's got CDs in it with sample policies? All you gotta do is load it and tweak it. You don't have to type it from scratch. I started all of that, but we never got anywhere on a lot of those policies, but there are a lot of policies the township is supposed to have in place. But we got some of them through the board, but not very many.
Twenty-nineteen, it all kinda stops right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's when I, yeah. Twenty-nineteen is when I became clerk, and I was no longer deputy clerk, so I didn't have time to do it much. But, man, there's an awful lot. There's a zoning administrator description, job description, and everything, how they are to do their job, and when they're supposed to cite people or not cite people, and that's hand in hand.
It's written into the township ordinance now.
Well, it, it's, it's hand in hand with the ordinance. It's not part of the ordinance, I don't think. Not unless they changed it.
The ordinance.
And all of it was on the website, the website that I stood up that isn't there anymore. It's now you have a new one. But all that was on the website.
No, and minutes too, without.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And she know, she said there's a PDF there waiting just to be downloaded. We could have all those back. I, there's all of a sudden they're gone. We had all of them except for Larry Needy's stat was in there. There was a file, he didn't have it or something. I don't know. Yeah, I love it all, the historical one. There were two years of that, but anyway.
Yes.
I, if, if you can't find something, ask me. I might know where it is.
Okay.
I will be taking you up on that. I found some of your stuff, and it's, it's awesome.
Yeah, that was a start that I did.
Well, it's a great start, because everything that I like to get covered.
Yeah.
And it was adopted, uh, November, uh, November twelfth nineteen, but it never.
Well, it wasn't adopted.
Okay.
So that was the draft I was working, trying to get input.
Well. I'm gonna see it back.
Yeah, okay.
He has been very hopeful for the news.
Yes, thank you. Do, election time too.
Yeah, August, here we come.
Okay, uh, if there is no other public comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Paul Loser, favor.
I agree. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, Bob.
They get to ask the question when you end of the party, they're getting five hours a week.
Oh, yeah.
For the rest of the parks, who's, are the five hours ready, the rest of it too? Or somebody else? Are they gonna get forty hours?
I have anybody else that's just.
When you hire them, do they know how, probably, when they, they come for the interview and they say, how many hours?
Do you know that I will stop?
Yeah, anyway, that was my question.
Well, Bob's down, should be eight hours a day. How many days you want? Yes, right.